Good evening and happy spring. The April 10th meeting of the Evanston City Council will come to order with a clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Winn? Councilmember Nusma?
Here.
Councilmember Burns?
Here.
Councilmember Saffronin?
Councilmember Ravel?
Here.
Councilmember Reed?
Here.
Councilmember Harakaris?
Here.
Councilmember Kelly? And Councilmember Harris?
Present.
Mayor Abyss?
Here. We have a quorum present and are prepared to do our work. The first item on our agenda is my public announcements and proclamations, of which I have two. The first is very, very brief, but I think very important, given this community's commitments and values and priorities, which is to make everyone aware that April is Fair Housing Month. And I think that's a good reminder of some of the housing inequities that still exist in our communities today and that we need to work together to overcome.
Wait a moment, please. Cardon?
The second item is a proclamation proclaiming this week National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. So first of all, let me read the proclamation. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Evanston 911 Communication Center. And whereas public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety telecommunications of the Evanston 911 Communication Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year, now therefore I, me, Mayor of the City of Evanston, do hereby proclaim the week of April 9th through 15th, 2023, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the City of Evanston in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. Signed on this 10th day of April 2023. And to accept this proclamation, we have four of our telecommunicators with us. I need to say in advance, a bit of an apology. These proclamations are ordinarily nicely bound, and we, six o'clock crept up on us, I think is probably the best way to say it. So what I'm going to do is ask you to come up and accept this recognition, and if you're interested, we can do a photo together, but then I'll take the proclamation back to make sure that it's ultimately handed over in the condition that is worthy of the work that you all do. But if I could ask to approach the podium, the four telecommunicators, Linda Thompson, Carl Haston, Jesse McPhail, and Angela Coker. And if we could all give them a really big round of applause for their critical, critical public safety work they do for us every single day. All right. Councilmember Reed?
As you all are walking out, I just want to say thank you for the work that you do on behalf of residents of the 8th Ward. There's so many great examples of the work that, you know, folks in your profession do. I think, you know, it's one of the times when you can, you know, be on social media and see something dealing with the police department and always know that it's going to be a good response. And so really, thank you to everything you do. Bye.
Thank you.
We'll just switch the order of the agenda briefly and move ahead to the item four, communications from the city clerk.
I wanted to acknowledge a public comment from Dana Dean, who shared her opposition for the farmer's market to move. We also got another public comment. Again, six o'clock also crept up on me. We had a few that were late today. You bear with me. And there's at least, I know, one more about the farmer's market. It should be in your emails as well. And I also wanted to do a brief congratulations to the first Spanish police academy that graduated today, this past Thursday. We have a full room of Spanish speakers who took, for the first time, took a class of the police academy. It was a six-week course, and I also participated myself, just to be a part of that class. And I wanted to congratulate Chief Stewart and Deputy Chief Wright, Sergeant Brown, Sergeant Carrea, Sergeant Carter, Officer Jones, Officer Rust, Officer Cortez, Officer Lopez, Officer Daly, Sandra Hernandez, and our service desk, Officer Liz Mendoza. And Sandra Hernandez also works for 311. I also want to say thank you to the Moran Center for participating in the class, and to Officer Galindo and Officer Herrera, who were instrumental in putting the class together and recruiting the families that took the class, the six-week course, and ultimately graduated from it. I think it's a great example of what we can have in our police department if we support our officers to put wonderful programs together that benefit the relationships between the community and our police department. And not only that, but the people in the class also received legal kind of advice in the event that they would be arrested. They also received information about how to request information from the City of Evanston, a FOIA request. And they also received information about how to file a complaint if they ever, you know, have any complaint against a police officer. So you have, you know, people in uniform who are making sure people are getting a broad range of assistance and aid when it comes to how to interact with the police department. So thank you very much to all of the people who participated, and probably many more officers whose names I did not mention today.
That's fabulous. Thank you so much for that update, and thanks to all who made that happen. Next, we go to city managers' public announcements.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. No announcements tonight.
Thank you. In that case, we move on to public comments. There are 20 people signed up for public comments this evening, and so everyone will be given, everyone will be given two minutes and 15 seconds for their comments. So again, 2:15 for your comments. We'll begin, as always, with those who signed up in person to speak in person, beginning with Jeffrey Bussor, followed by Carlos Sutton, and then Ariana Flores.
Hi. Good evening. Thanks for allowing me to be here. My name is Jeffrey Bussor. I live at 320 Dempster Street in Evanston, which is across the street from 319 Dempster. I would like to forewarn the new neighbors of what they might experience in the hands of HODC. On March 15th, 2023, I looked out on my front window and saw three Cook County Sheriff's Squad cars parked in front of 319 Dempster. One might be alarmed unless you knew the history of clarette hotel apartments in HODC. In 1973, I moved into a house at 1244 Forest Avenue. It is a second house south of Dempster on the west side of the street. It's about 200 feet from 319 Dempster. At that time, the clarette was still an SRO. I would often walk by the building and was told by the tenants that they could rent a furnished room by the week, a month, or for the whole year. The owner sold the building in the late 1900s, but the new owner kept operating it as an SRO. During this period, there was never any problem with the tenants and the neighborhood. In 1999, I bought the Daniel Burnham-designed double house at 318/320 Dempster and began a three-year historic restoration of the building. I'm not sure of the exact date, but around 2002 or 2004, the clarette was sold to the new owners, the Interfaith Council. Their plan was to rehab the SRO building into small apartments with bathrooms and kitchenettes. Because this building is in R1 district, they had to get a variance and approval from the neighbors. The Interfaith Council held a neighborhood meeting to explain their plans. They told us that they wanted to provide low-income housing. In order to do this, they would remodel the building into 44 apartments and restore the street facade to its original design. When I asked if they would provide parking for the tenants as per city code, they said it would not be necessary, since the tenants were low-income and wouldn't have automobiles. This is not true. The neighbors were in agreement that this project would benefit the community and provide additional low-income housing in Evanston. At some point, the Interfaith Council was replaced by HODC, and then about 10 years ago, there was a change in the interaction of the clarette and the community. On August 18th, 2013, our neighbor Joe Callian, who lives at 1246 Forest, just across the street from the clarette, wrote an email to Melissa Winn. She complained about the nuisance created by the large number of emergency vehicles sent to the building. And I will follow this up. I guess I can send you an email of all this. Okay? Because I just have a couple more paragraphs. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Mr. Carlos Sutton, who will be followed by Ariana Flores, and then Kinyar Reza.
Good evening, Mayor Abyss, Clerk Mendoza, and the Alderman. I'm Carlos Sutton, a 5th Ward resident and a taxpayer at the same address for over 73 years. As a stakeholder, I am opposed to these proposed ordinance that you are considering tonight, 34023 and 35023, listed in the agendas P3 and P4. I know you will approve these ordinance and disregard the concerns of stakeholders in this community. And you also will disregard all the procedures that you have set up for notification and the Land Use Commission. So these ordinance are problematic and effectively deny stakeholders a voice in the determining of what is best for their community. The hypocrisy you have demonstrated is monumental, and it is obvious your real intent is to marginalize certain residents of our community. You have allowed a carpetbagger to adversely affect my community. One, you don't care as long as affordable housing is concentrated in Wards 2 and 5. Two, you don't care that the procedures of notification and the variances that you are about to apply would not be allowed in your ward. You deny HODC's proposal for utilizing a golf cart path in Ward 6, but you vote to approve over 14 variances and building on contaminated soil, which is zone commercial. You don't care that you don't observe the separation of church and state, and you don't care that your ordinance will adversely affect our designated landmark. You're not ashamed by your sending this project back to the Land Use Commission. In conclusion, I will not commend you for your double standard practices, redlining, marginalization that you are imposing upon me and my community. You don't represent all Evanston residents accordingly, but I do recognize that you at least respect and represent your own constituents. Unfortunately, we do not have this opportunity in the 5th Ward.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Ariana Flores, who will be followed by Kinyar Reza, and the following line has three people's names on it: Aiden Flores, Tatiana Chambers, and Nemi Cooper.
Good evening. My name's Ariana Flores, and I yield my time to Kinyar Reza.
Good evening, everyone. It's been almost two months since I first spoke regarding this proposal, and to this day, I have yet a few questions to be answered. Is this building really for the Evanston community if priority cannot be given to Evanstonians? Funding for building of the church, where is it coming from? It is being designed to be grandiose, shiny new building, and presented like the crown's jewel. This jewel is meant to serve 200-plus parishioners that have not existed in the last 14 years I've lived around there. The decontamination of the land it's supposed to sit on, it's too expensive for even the city to take on. How is a small church pastor going to afford that important aspect, which in my research, the low-end cost is about $180,000? Foundation is what makes a building strong. The development of this church building is the cornerstone of this swap proposal, and it's a weak one. Is this council willing to continue to perpetuate the corner-empty lot tradition? Is the city gifting money to the pastor for his church, or is Northwestern University reaching this far as well? The proposed church building comes with a lot of Northwestern-inspired features. I'm a woman of faith, don't get me wrong, but Jesus moved crowds and transformed lives from a hilltop. He did not need a shiny building. What makes the pastor of Mount Piscatah more special than Jesus himself? Or any other pastor of the six churches within that two-block radius? Can these pastors expect money for shiny new buildings as well? If the hope is to reach people and change lives through love, compassion, and community, and get them closer to Christ, then it has failed before it's even built. Redlining, you negate this practice, yet you deny the easement through the golf course in the 7th Ward without less people coming forward to speak their concerns. The 7th Ward has the least affordable housing. This would have been the perfect opportunity to spread the wealth and to prove us wrong, and deny that redlining that is not being imposed on the 5th Ward. The wealth still goes to the wealthy, as well as the power. Where are those people from these wards that say affordable housing is in crisis and that families in need must be helped? They rather worry about the impact of birds and three or four oak trees than families in need. Also, since that February meeting in the 1700 block has gotten visits from Lisa Costebele o, citing violations for things that have been existing many years prior to the position of this building. From address numbers missing in the back of the properties, to cars in the back of drivers not being moved enough, to pools not having a deck surrounding it, I don't imagine Lisa visits the 7th Ward residence or the 319 Dempster building for that matter. I have to add that just the other day, she was confronted by my husband and another neighbor for gunning her car down the alley behind the lot, where my kid and neighbors were playing. This is exactly our concern, people coming out of that alleyway without regards to safety. I hope that if you approve this building, you continue to send her with the same scrutiny that you are doing now, and that Richard Kinnick and Mount Piscatah pastor get violation notices for every insignificant thing she can think of, and that she tells us about it, just like she divulges information about one neighbor's violation to another neighbor. Great practices, City of Evanston. This land swap proposal will not negatively affect our neighborhood. It already has. This proposal will take away a good chunk of our potential retail, one that many of you voiced you'd like to see developed. We have a counterproposal, one that some teens have worked on. Listen to what our kids, the future of this city, have to say. Be the change you speak of. Vote no. This proposal, just like you did for the 7th Ward.
Point of order. What's your question, Councilmember Reed?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're providing a level playing field for everyone. And I know that the speaker before ceded their time, but Rule 6.2 does not allow speakers to cede time. Everyone has the same amount of time.
I apologize. I was unaware of that. Thank you. Yeah, no, I've obviously been violating that rule my whole time as mayor, but I will confess that that was inadvertent, and I regret that. The next speaker is, again, this kind of three-person team of Aiden Flores, Tatiana Chambers, and Nemi Cooper, who will be followed by Sophia Chang, and then Anna Delitt.
Hello. We want to share a new version for the corner of Church and Darrow. We understand that affordable housing is important, but the 5th Ward lacks the stability of a community and is of equal importance. The 5th Ward needs an area that is going to prosper, an area like Dempster and Dodge, like Chicago Avenue, downtown in an area like Central Park. We need something that could benefit the 5th Ward, along with the elderly families and ETHS students equally.
Imagine being in high school and being able to just walk across the street to grab a drink, a snack, a new book, or some crafts. Imagine being an elder with somewhere to learn new technology and take yoga classes. Imagine walking down your neighborhood with your family and not having to travel far to get a pastry, a juice, or even items for a school project. All of this in just one corner could serve and help this community prosper, like the many other communities in Evanston.
So imagine a three-story building. On the first floor, there will be a coffee shop, a bakery, a juice bar, an arts and crafts store, and a bookstore. On the second floor, there will be a dance studio and yoga place for all ages. And finally, on the third floor, a space for the elderly to learn technology, and a resource center for high schoolers transitioning into college, and a common room for events. This will include parking and a shared courtyard for the stores. This will bring jobs, resources, and revenue, which the 5th Ward lacks. We ask vote no to the project. We want what other communities have, and that is a space so that our neighborhood for once could prosper and families can enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Sophia Chang, who will be followed by Anna Delitt, and then Shamara Chambers.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Sophia Chang, and I'm an undergraduate student at Northwestern University that currently lives on campus. I'm here alongside my peer, Anna Delitt, today on behalf of Joining Forces for Affordable Housing and their initiatives for increased affordable housing in Evanston. We would like to offer our support for the HODC Affordable Housing Development. Before Anna introduces herself and expands upon our personal stake in affordable housing in Evanston, I would like to recognize our personality and the perception of Northwestern students in relation to the Evanston community. For many of us, our stay in Evanston is temporary. However, this does not diminish our obligation to Evanston as community members. As Northwestern student, our role in these community dialogues is unique and is predicated on acknowledging Northwestern's history and position as an institution in Evanston. Northwestern holds a responsibility to advocate and support equitable policies and change within the Evanston community. That includes the right to affordable and adequate housing that is secure and safe. We care fundamentally about affordable housing as a right and recognize the complicated history of housing in the United States. Specifically, the relationship between race and housing as an intentionally discriminatory practice cannot be denied. Affordable housing is part of the solution to mitigate this historic inequality. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Anna Delitt, who will be followed by Shamara Chambers, and then Radhika Sirtz.
Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you, Sophia, for the introduction and for acknowledging our positionality. My name is Anna, and I am currently living on campus at Northwestern, but will be a renter in the fall. Affordable housing is an issue that directly impacts the student body. There is a false perception that all students at Northwestern are financially secure and comfortable enough to afford the pricing of housing surrounding campus. The truth is that 44% of the student body is on financial aid, many of which are struggling to find affordable rental housing that does not interfere with their education and access to opportunities on campus. Many students live in the 5th Ward, and we feel that affordable housing is necessary to satiate the needs for both the long-term and Northwestern community. In our work effort to push affordable housing, we hope the passage and construction of this building will both inspire and put pressure on Northwestern to follow suit and support its students and the Evanston community, and prioritize the creation of affordable housing, and take accountability for its involvement in the crisis as an anchor institution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Shamara Chambers, who will be followed by Radhika Sirtz, and then Ray Friedman.
Hello. If you can change a Sonya here overnight, they could do it anywhere else. Affordability is not by dumb luck. It's cheaper to build in the 5th Ward. They made it that way. And the more affordable housing they put here, the cheaper it gets to be built here. This is how they keep the median income in the 5th Ward low, property values low, by putting poverty on top of poverty. Land availability. Evanston buys out houses and tears them down in the 5th Ward to build more affordable housing buildings, leading to a lot of empty lands. But there's a land right here, right by the parking lot you own. Turn that into an affordable housing building. If you want more land, driving up Rich going towards Howard, there are three parks within walking distance from each other, two blocks from each other, also owned by the City of Evanston. One of these parks, they're talking about turning into a dog park. I thought we had an affordable housing crisis. So why don't you turn any of these examples into a big affordable housing building, or better yet, give it to Richard to build his building? If we have such an affordable housing crisis, why isn't 718 Main Street a 120-unit, five-story building all affordable housing? Only 12 of these units are affordable. That doesn't sound like a crisis to me. Not too long ago, these same councilmembers shut down a proposal for affordable housing in the 7th Ward. They were asked for an easement through the 10-hole of the golf course, and they said no. Fewer people showed up against it, and it was shut down. What happened to the affordable housing crisis then? Where was connection for the homeless then? Where were all of you to demand affordable housing then? This councilmember has been in office since 2015 and has about 10 units of affordable housing in her ward. Now we know why. That is, affordable housing seems to be okay with you in the 5th Ward, just not in yours. You come into a low-income, primarily black-and-brown neighborhood and sell us the story of affordable housing crisis, a crisis you don't believe in. This has a name, modernized redlining. When I asked Bobby, what do you guys, Bobby, have you guys heard back about prioritizing Evanston residents? He said no, they put their request in back in 2021. Two years later, we're still waiting. How is 319 Dempster Street with 288 complaints in the last two years and has been a troubled building since 2005, not a problem building, Bobby? Each of you got the police calls report right in front of you, also an article from 2015 written by Evanston now regarding 319 Dempster Street. Wrapping up, the church is oversized with about six to eight churches in the immediate area. Is a church for 200 members really necessary with no parking? His current church needs repairs. How is he going to manage this? He has said he has no money to build a church and no money to buy the land. How is he going to pay for the decontamination of the dirt that the city claims is too expensive? The church on 1825 Dodge Avenue bought a vacant land by them for little to nothing from the city over 15 years ago, intending to expand their church, and that land sits empty today. This is yet another church trying to get their land for free and not developing it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Radhika Sirtz, who will be followed by Ray Friedman, and then Sue Lohbach.
Okay, let's discuss two words, non-for-profit and affordable housing. Two scam words. FBI Attorney General is warning us that when you hear the words "non-for-profit" or "affordable", that we look deeper into it. HODC is coming and asking for $5 million of taxpayers' money, $4 million from Evanston million-dollar lot. Has anyone seen their financial disclosure? They just come and ask for money and here in City of Evanston, here, take it, take it. He's not asking for $1 of the money in Willmett. He has purchased a lot in Willmett. So how is this fair, that we taxpayers' money are funding this? Units are three times the cost of fair-market-rate units. In Lincoln Park, $285,000 are affordable condos. We can use $4 million. We can help people become homeowners. So why are we giving this money to the corporation that we don't know what they're doing with this money? Are they funding strip club in Las Vegas? What are they doing with this money? They have 500 units paid by taxpayers three times over what the value is, and they're taking approximately, we don't know, about $5 million in income. Did they create a single condo for people to have an affordable condo to purchase? Did they create a single affordable unit? None. Zero. It's a scam. And it's grotesque. It is truly, truly grotesque. Bobby, your job should have been to come to us. Your job should have been to bring the police reports. Your job should have been to sit with us. We are all for affordable housing. This is not affordable housing. Another major issue, they're taking Section 8. Section 8 pays full market- So how is this fair, that we taxpayers' money are funding this? Units are three times the cost of fair market rate units. In Lincoln Park, $285,000 are affordable condos. We can use $4 million. We can help people become homeowners. So why are we giving this money to the corporation that we don't know what they're doing with this money? Are they funding strip club in Las Vegas? What are they doing with this money? They have 500 units paid by taxpayers three times over what the value is, and they're taking approximately, we don't know, about $5 million in income. Did they create a single condo for people to have an affordable condo to purchase? Did they create a single affordable unit? None, zero. It's a scam, and it's grotesque. It is truly, truly grotesque. Bobby, your job should have been to come to us. Your job should have been to bring the police reports. Your job should have been to sit with us. We are all for affordable housing. This is not affordable housing. Another major issue, they're taking Section 8. Section 8 pays full market rate rents. What's affordable about that? With their vouchers, they can go anywhere. They can go by the lake and rent. They're also, we are finding out that this is supportive housing. Does anyone know difference between affordable and supportive housing? Supportive housing are people who are in a desperate need of all kinds of help, and now we're gonna pack them so they can create their profits?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Ray Friedman, who will be followed by Sue Lohlbach, and then Craig Williams.
Hope everyone had a great Easter weekend, those who celebrate, and hope everyone is having a happy Passover, those who celebrate that. Congratulations to Chrissy and Juan for their election as council members for another two years. I was very surprised at all the emails, text message, letters and emails from Mayor Biss. I was not expecting all of that from a current mayor, nor do I think that this is a proper way to conduct a campaign. Back to my questions from last council, last council meeting, two weeks ago, about general obligation bonds, and ask not to allow the approximately $22 million in general obligation bonds to be passed. Tonight, we have A3, A4, A5, A6, A7, and A8 to be used for additional general obligation bonds for a total of approximately $4 million. Added to the $22 million from two weeks ago, that's $26 million. We already owe $100 million, over $100 million in general obligation bonds. Last year, we paid about $15 million in principal and interest. Do you know that's about $1.2 million per month? When you add approximately $26 million from two weeks ago and tonight, you'll add approximately $300,000 per month to our principal and interest payments totaling approximately $1.5 million per month in general obligation bond payments. Also, please check A14, which says $7,800 per month. You proposed the payment to be $5,600 per month, the total is $68,000, not $7,800 per month for a total of $93,000. And A15, expressing the commitment to create a new park, where would the park be located and what would that cost? Shouldn't this be decided, both of those things be decided before you vote on it tonight? One more comment I have, if you don't mind.
Thank you very much.
Why is Ryan Field hiring Turner Walsh for the project at Ryan Field before it ever got voted on? I don't get it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Sue Lohlbach, who will be followed by Craig Williams.
Hello, I'm Sue Lohlbach with Connections for the Homeless, and I just want to say that Joining Forces for Affordable Housing fully supports this development proposed by HODC. We believe very strongly that renters are full stakeholders in the community and that they deserve housing that they can afford. We also believe that affordable housing is not a way to preserve redlining or a way to keep communities disinvested, but it's actually a way to relieve poverty and allow families that are currently struggling to have enough money left over to meet their basic needs and have the potential to thrive. So we hope that you will approve this development tonight, and thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Craig Williams.
First of all, I want to mention that there were five people killed in Louisville today and nine people injured. So if we can put everything in context, that would be really nice. Speaking of death, in my building, 319 Dempster, there were three suicides in the last year or two. There was a point where I was in a locked ward for four days because I would have been the fourth. That is because of my experience in 319 Dempster and the incompetence and possible criminality of Richard Koenig and the lie that Connections for the Homeless is telling, that they're such a wonderful organization because they're responsible for the sheer hell I've been in for fifteen years. I'd also like to thank Chris Meeks, a very nice woman named Noalita who used to do cleaning in the building, James and Robin of Maintenance, all of whom helped me survive two or three catastrophes, namely fire and flood, which rendered half the building homeless each time. That's what's actually going on. By the way, I'm the guy who lived above the dead body for three weeks, not three days, three weeks, plus another ten days of smell, horrible smell, that took a little while to go away. I could go on for the next two hours about the things that have happened in that building that have been dangerous and brought, I don't even know what else to say about that. Three suicides, three fires, two floods. There's still a felon, well, I shouldn't say felon. There's a person who was charged and arrested for beating his girlfriend and for selling crack in the nearby parking lot. He is still in the building and has only spent a couple of days in jail. I live two doors from that. I have PTSD from this building. I can't function. Just letting you know what reality is in this building and what Richard Koenig would do because he doesn't know what he's doing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So that concludes those who signed up in person to speak in person. Now we go to those who signed up. I got you. I got you. Now we go to those who signed up online to speak in person, beginning with Bonnie Wilson, who will be followed by Delisa Williams, and then Charlotte Kurtzweil.
I'm Bonnie Wilson. I'm going to talk about Church and Darrow P4 tonight. I'm Bonnie Wilson. I lived and worked in Evanston. I've been a real estate agent in Evanston for thirty-eight years. One of the biggest challenges I have found as a real estate agent has been in the rental market in Evanston. Today, I checked the multiple listing service for rentals in Evanston. The lowest rent for a two-bedroom is $1,575, and the next lowest is $1,650. In three-bedrooms, the lowest rent is $1,250, which is really unusual that it's that low, and the next lowest rent is $1,745, which is usually what rents are going for in three-bedroom apartments. The development at Church and Darrow, the rents are going to be $800 for a two-bedroom and $1,000 for a three-bedroom. A prospective tenant who is making less than $40,000 a year cannot live in Evanston now. However, after this development is built, they would be able to afford to live here. A few years ago, at a housing steering committee, the committee members were complaining when they interviewed retail clerks, writers, teacher aides who worked in Evanston, that they told the committee they could not afford to live in Evanston because of the high rent. With the Church and Darrow development, thirty-three more households, from young families who are starting in the workforce to older adults who are living on social security, may be able to live in Evanston without struggle. Now, close to half of Evanston residents are paying more than 30% of their income, and those with the lowest incomes are struggling the most to meet their basic necessities. Because of this development, there will be new affordable housing opportunities in Evanston that is not now available. Plus, it will make my job in Evanston a lot easier for my future tenant clients. In fact, today, I received a call from a tenant who is living at Hinman &amp; Lee. Their building was just sold to a new owner, and they can no longer live in the building because their rent is being raised more than $200 a month. So what are you waiting for, council members? Please vote yes for this wonderful opportunity to have everyone who works in Evanston be able to live in Evanston when this development at Church and Darrow is built. Thank you. Got twelve more minutes. I just want to say, I've been working on affordable housing for over fifteen years in Evanston. I'm also one of the founding members of the Joining Forces for Affordable Housing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Delisa Williams, who will be followed by Charlotte Kurtzweil, and then Haley Guyon. Is Delisa Williams here? In that case, we'll move on to Charlotte Kurtzweil, who will be followed by Haley Guyon, and then Robert Paris.
My name is Charlotte Kurtzweil. I will be yielding my time to Haley Guyon. If permissible, if not, you understand.
I think it's time for you to start following the rules.
Time for, okay. Haley Guyon, I'm speaking on behalf of Crosby Theater LLC, a legal stakeholder adjoining the property development that's on your agenda today for a vote, items P3 and P4. And I'd like to urge the city council to wait to vote on this HODC and Mount Pisgah project until it has been given the proper attention it's due, review, et cetera, relating to the land swap issues, the division of the lots, and the funding decision of $4 million in funding. The record should reflect that procedural errors have brought us to where we are today for this particular vote. These ordinances are advancing an agenda at the expense of a legal stakeholder adjoining the property that has relied on the zoning code as it's written today and followed it. And now this project is going forward in a way that does not follow the zoning ordinance, and I think that's something that the record needs to reflect here before you vote yes or decide how you choose to vote, should it be voted on today. We are disappointed and concerned at the city council's willingness to press forward with a project when an applicant has demonstrated at every step of the process that communication, honesty, transparency with the community are not priorities. HODC has repeatedly made changes to its plans, including changing the amount of retail space and parking spots without clear notification to city council or the community. Its recent plans state that there will be only 31 parking space for 33 units, which is less than one space per apartment. HODC and Councilmember Burns have repeatedly claimed that members of the community in opposition to this project are not stating facts. Here are some facts we'd like to remind the council member of. Council of, HODC currently has three property managers and nine maintenance staff, over 400 existing units. HODC has requested, but not been granted, a unit in the proposed building to be set aside for eyes and ears in the building. Again, this has not been approved. This either puts the burden on that resident to be a 24/7 property manager, or the total number of property managers remaining at three, giving each manager over 100 units to oversee. We would like both of these projects to be held until HODC and Mount Pisgah can modify their budgets and financials to reflect the modified plans, so you have all the information in front of you to cast an informed vote this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Robert Paris.
Good evening. I'm Robert Paris. I'm a broker and a property manager here in Evanston, and I'm here to comment on Church and Darrow project, and I'm in support of the project. I come from a background of dealing with a variety of tenants, many who receive services from Connections for the Homeless, from the federal government, and from a variety of other social agencies. And I know what it's like to be responsive to people who are struggling and to people who don't have a lot of opportunities or a lot of places to turn. And so I understand when there's a problem in the building, when someone is dealing with substance abuse, or dealing with gambling issues, or not being able to pay rent, or a variety of other social challenges. And we try to treat everyone with compassion and respect. And I believe that the majority of landlords, and likely HODC and other organizations, are doing important work, not just to make a profit. I'm a for-profit organization, but a lot of our work is to treat people with respect and to have affordable housing for them. I believe that this project will look amazing. I think it'll get rid of the blight that's been on that corner for decades. And I look at other similar projects that have occurred in Evanston, and I read the crime report every single day. And anecdotally, I'm aware that some buildings, some that were mentioned here, have more challenges than others. But the federally subsidized organization housing and some privately owned but subsidized by government organizations do extremely well with screening their tenants and providing excellent services. And when you read the crime report, you don't see those addresses pop up at all. So I feel like this project, with all its good intentions, can be managed properly. There's a great council and a great group of people, of community members and in our government, that will work to hold landlords accountable and also to hold the tenants accountable and to help the tenants when they need help so that it can be a success. So I'm in support of this project, and I'm thankful for the opportunity to give my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We now go to those who signed up to speak online, beginning with Alderman Dolores Holmes, followed by Janet Alexander Davis, and then Mike Vasilko. Alderman Holmes?
Good evening, Mayor Biss. Can you hear me? Because I had to switch, I'm having connection problems. I had to switch to my phone, so I hope you can hear me.
We hear you loud and clear.
Okay, fantastic. Good evening, Mayor, and city council members, and Clerk Mendoza. Thank you for this opportunity. I want to start by just saying congratulations to the 2nd and 9th Ward. Alderman, you are prime example of when the people speak of what it means. So I'm just really excited for you and know that you're gonna continue to do great jobs. I really came tonight to offer my support again for the Church Dodge Darrow project. I am amazed when I hear people who live in the 5th Ward. And I must say, most of them are probably Johnny-come-lately, since I've been here over eighty-three years, and I certainly didn't know any of them or see any of them in award meetings or other community meetings. However, I want to say to them, I don't understand how you can come and live in a community and delight in it like you all are doing. It just amazes me that you have such a little respect for where you live. I also want to say to the council tonight, eighteen years ago, almost eighteen years ago, it'd be eighteen years in June, I stood before, sat at where Councilman Burns is sitting now, to ask for a development at Church and Darrow. We lost by one vote to get it. And before that, it had been vacant for decades, and it continues to be vacant. I don't know why you all can't see the value of having something really productive at that corner. And we cannot tell the church, Elder Wilson and his church members what they can do with their property. The city not giving them any property would be a switch if there was property exchange. I think you need to understand what you're saying and get the facts clear. So, City Council, I'm saying to you, tonight is a chance for you all, a second chance, for you to rectify a mistake that was made eighteen years ago, and really go ahead and okay this proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Janet Alexander Davis, who will be followed by Mike Vasilko, and then Carl Klein.
Good evening, everyone, Mayor, city council, city clerk, everyone in the audience, everyone giving their own opinions about things, and that's a good thing. Whether one agrees or not, respect is still something that at least I learned growing up, and I think a lot of people did too, and I wish today we did more of that. I am in support of this project, affordable housing. When we build buildings here, I guess a percentage sometimes is required of the developer to make something affordable. And I know the stress that the council goes through and has gone through to try to figure that out, when, let's say, a family that really needs three bedrooms, but the project is only gonna allow one bedroom or two bedroom, that has not worked out well. Mount Pisgah's plans for a 5th Ward church expansion and affordable housing development at the corner of Church and Darrow will enhance the 5th Ward. The corner of Church Street The corner of Church Street and Darrow is one of the gateways into Evanston, will offer affordable housing in a newly constructed 33-unit building. Affordable housing project next door to an expanded Mount Pisgah. For years, this section of town, in my opinion, has needed attention, and it hasn't gotten it. I'm told too, that if this wasn't enough, there are 300 houseless District 65 families living in and around the Evanston community. It means we have families whose children go to school here, but they cannot afford to live here. Our students and their families live in shelters or sleep on couches at friends and family's members' homes. So I hope that you will vote in favor of this project today. That's 33 units of affordable housing, and we will then start working on the next project that will be available someplace in Evanston where there is a lot, and as I said my last time I talked, we don't have land. That's one of the problems here. We don't have a lot of land. So thanks for listening, and I just really do support this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Mike Vasylko, who will be followed by Carl Klein, and then Mary Rosinski.
Good evening. I'm calling in by phone. Hopefully you can hear me clearly. I want to finish my comments that I was making at APW. Just a commentary on the past election, which I feel is kind of a new evolution of how campaigning is, appears to be going in Evanston. It was heavy-handed, I think everyone has to admit that. It was heavy-handed for, you know, the mayor, ex-mayors, ex-aldermen, an alderman who's now a prominent, has the prominent position at Northwestern University, speaker, a director on the board of directors at the Evanston Roundtable, out there campaigning, donating money. You know, it really puts a bad spin, I think, on, and people see this, and a lot of people I spoke to have seen this and made similar statements to me. It's just unfortunate, I think, that there's so much thumbs on the voting scales going forward. Hopefully that will not happen again. But what concerns me is that the aldermen or the council members that were elected under those circumstances, it's really not the voice of the people, as the previous speaker just said, but it's a currency of sorts that makes those council members beholden to the mayor and his agenda, beholden to Northwestern and their agenda, come, you know, this new stadium, part-time stadium, I should say, full-time performance venue. So I'm just very concerned at what took place, how it took place, and it should not be applauded as a stroke of democracy. I think we actually undermined democracy in this.
15 seconds.
So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Carl Klein, who will be followed by Mary Rosinski, and then Joe
Good evening. I hope that everyone at the city council is able to review the document that I sent to you all, which was an analysis of the redistricting in Evanston. The redistricting committee currently is only proposing one map. I don't think that that's the right approach. I also don't think it's the right approach that you are coming to the full council without allowing the full city, all of our residents, to weigh in on these maps. You should allow for a full community outreach program to have comments on the ward map, and you should have more than one ward map. Also, I want you to be aware that the one map that is going to be discussed tonight was drawn primarily by one council member. And then it was minimally altered to reflect an additional map that a council member drew. A third map at the redistricting committee was proposed, but after maybe less than five minutes of discussion, it was summarily dismissed and never talked about again. So please take all this into account. I know that there's not going to be any final action tonight, but I think this is putting the cart before the horse. You should go out to the public and ask for their input on this proposed map before coming to the full council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Mary Rosinski, who will be followed by Joe Hopper, and then Tina Payden.
Hi, thank you for allowing the public comment. I want to agree 100% with our previous speakers, Mike Vasylko. I think you can't say enough about the democratic process in Evanston and how that needs to be reevaluated. Regarding the Dodge Darrow proposal, I 100% support affordable housing, but I think we are not doing it correctly with this project. And I'm concerned because there's a West Side master plan, and we just spent a fortune, I think, on a study for Thrive and talking about business districts. And I know we've increased the commercial space there, but I'm not sure we increased it enough to create a really wonderful, little viable business district down there, which I remember years ago when I was attending the West Side plans, that was something that people really wanted. And I think it's critical, 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 to listen to all the residents. If people are speaking against it, they should, their voices should not be diminished. They're our neighborhoods, and if we don't value our neighborhoods, what the heck are we doing here in Evanston? So I think, you know, the other thing that someone brought up tonight, which I wasn't aware of, is it really is important to have a understanding of, is it supportive or is it affordable? And the other discussion item is that in Evanston, our AMI for white versus non-white is, there's a huge gap there. So who is this really for? And we've heard cases of people on both sides say it, but I think there needs to be more discussion before this gets passed. Second of all, I think that the bonds, there's something on A4 to potentially pass more bonds, and I think our city needs a forensic audit. I think that the fact that we just found another $10 million surplus this year says something is wrong with our budgeting, or we're creating slush funds, or something is going on. But we don't need to take out another bond for projects. What we do need to do is look at our capital improvements projects and maintain our buildings with the money that we have. So something's wrong, and we need to find out what it is. Okay, that's all. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Joe Hopper, who will be followed by Tina Payden, and then Judith Tredway.
Hi, thanks. My comments are about the Thrive report that I learned about just this past weekend. Somebody directed my attention to the recommendation that the farmer's market be moved to Fountain Square, which I think is a terrible idea. So I wanted to express my three concerns about that. First of all, I'm worried that moving the farmer's market to Fountain Square would ruin the market. The real differentiator of the Evanston farmer's market, which I have shopped at for 30 years that I've lived in Evanston, and I work for one of the farmers now, I've worked for him for 12 years, so I'm there every Saturday morning at 4:03, 4:30 in the morning, setting up and selling his wares all day long, is that it's going to ruin the market. These are real farmers. They are organic farmers. What's attracting people from all over the city and all over the suburbs is that this market is unique, and what really makes it special is the quality and the kinds of farmers that it attracts. If it's in Fountain Square, we're going to lose those farmers. They don't have the space, they don't have the capacity, they don't have the ability to handle the customers that are coming to buy our vegetables and our fruits at the market. My second concern is that the recommendation seems to have come without any input or consultation with the people who are involved. It didn't include any input from the farmers, the workers like me, the customers who are shopping there. It seems to have come out of some sort of consultant perspective, which then relates to my third concern, which is that the report, the Thrive report, I haven't read the whole thing. I've only read the farmer's market piece of it, but it feels very dishonest to me. When I saw the report, I started to try to understand who was making these recommendations and where it comes from. It seems to, it's presented as if it's coming from the city, and from Mayor Bis, but it's not. It's coming from consultants, and that's hidden from the report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Tina Payden, who will be followed by Judith Tredway, and then Peter Braithwaite.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can hear you perfectly.
Good evening. Indict. Intentional, neglectful, deceitful, imprisonment, criminal conviction, and truth. By voting yes for these two projects at Church and Darrow, your actions are intentional, neglectful, and deceitful. The neighbors said no, and we don't want it for our crowded fifth ward, and you voted yes without even seeing the revisions. I hope through further investigation into city officials, city staff, and developers, that it will result in imprisonment, criminal conviction, and the truth will come out about the lies in the city of Evanston. Now, you allowed Pastor Dillard and others to speak and gave time to the people that spoke in favor for the project, you didn't have a problem then, and allow people to speak four and five minutes at a time. What happened then? Some of the previous speakers do not live near or around the HODC project, and the students probably live at E2, The Link, The Reserve, or Albion. Certainly, they would not go and live at any project at HODC. If indictment is good enough for Donald Trump and Mike Madigan, it's good enough for you, city of Evanston officials. Black lives matter, and I hope there is no retaliation for our comments. I have already been retaliated against by the city of Evanston for my recent comments and my past comments. Perhaps it's time for a class action lawsuit against the city of Evanston, because that is the only thing you seem to understand, is when you lose money. Good evening.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Judith Tredway, who will be followed by Peter Braithwaite. Is Ms. Tredway in the Zoom? It looks as though Ms. Tredway is no longer in the Zoom, so the next speaker then will be Peter Braithwaite.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hopefully you can hear me.
We can hear you loud and clear.
Wonderful. First, I want to start off by thank, congratulating my council representative, Alderman Chrissy Harris, as well as Juan Hedicaris. I also want to thank all the members of city council who supported them during their appointments as well as endorsed them in elections. I couldn't be happier, Mayor, members of city council, with the outcome of the results. And I can't speak on behalf of the second ward residents, but for those that supported our current representative, we're really glad that residents did their homework, showed up ready to vote, and looking forward to being there when she officially is reappointed. So thank you very much, and continue to do the work that you were elected to do. Good night.
Thank you very much. Has Ms. Tredway re-entered the Zoom by any chance? In that case, that concludes public comment for the evening. I will say that I have been, I think rightfully admonished by public comment to have admitted something pretty important in the mayor's announcements. Congratulations to our two now-elected council members, Councilmember Harris and Councilmember Hedicaris. It's been a joy to work with you since you joined the council, and we know it'll be a joy to work with you during the course of these next two years. And that, there will be, I think perhaps some people are curious about this, there will be, even though this represents continuity in the middle of the term, there will be a formal swearing-in as soon as the elections are certified, which we expect to happen in one of the two meetings in May. I would guess the first meeting in May, but we're just not certain exactly on how quickly the county clerk will certify the results. So we'll have more of an opportunity for the two of you to have a day in the sun at that point. Would the clerk please add Councilmember Wynn to the roll? This brings us now to special orders of business. Councilmember Newsman, would you care to make a motion to facilitate a discussion relative to item SP1?
Mr. Mayor, I will move item SP1, discussion of a proposed new ward map.
Second. Councilmember Newsman moves that we discuss a proposed new ward map. Councilmember Reed, seconds. Obviously, there is a packet. Is there any presentation prepared? Okay. So we'll begin then with the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be presenting as chairman of the redistricting committee this evening, and would like to focus our discussion on the proposed new ward map. But before we get there, I want to share with you our process and some of the thinking that has brought us to this point. So I will do that by acknowledging my fellow committee members, councilmembers Wynn, Burns, and Reed, thank you for your participation in this process. We could not have done this without support from the city's legal department, and also Mark Varner, one of our exemplary city staff, doing some of the GIS work here. Looking back at how we have got to this point, this work started in December of '21 when council created this committee, appointing the four of us to do this work. We met starting in the spring of 2022, and really kind of initiated the public engagement process of this redistricting with two town halls in July of 2022. One of those town halls was in English, one of those town halls was in Spanish, with muchas gracias to Senora Clerk for helping with that translation. All of this, all of these presentations and videos are on the redistricting website for members of the public who would like to take a deep dive. So moving forward from the town halls, we then devoted the next six or seven months to a very thoughtful and coordinated public engagement process. And what we did is focused ward by ward at the series of meetings over the months from August into February of 2023, looking at each ward individually. I will point out that we did not draft a map until after this public engagement process was completed. And so then several of the committee members drafted some maps, which were works in process. Those were presented to the committee at our February 28th meeting. And we weren't sure at that point if we were going to move forward to tonight with one map, or two maps, or three maps. The way it worked out, two of the maps that we were talking about on February 28th were close enough that it made sense to try and kind of combine them, and we met again on March 27th, and the committee decided to move forward with the map that we are sharing with you tonight. Let's take a minute to talk about the legal requirements for redistricting. And looking first at state law, state law does not actually require us to redistrict. Our population is 78,000 or so, and it's been in that 70,000 to 90,000 range for the last 50 or 60 years. So state law does not actually require us to redistrict. However, we can redistrict. State law does allow us to redistrict for any other reason, and as we're about to see, there's a pretty good reason. If we do redistrict, state law requires that the wards shall be as nearly equal in population as possible. It requires the wards to be as compact as possible, and the wards have to be contiguous territories. So these were the guidelines we were operating under for state law. And what really is moving us in the direction of redistricting is federal law. This, we're talking about the Constitution, the Equal Protection Clause of the This, we're talking about the Constitution, the Equal Protection Clause of the 14th Amendment, the Voting Rights Act of 1965, and a body of case law, which answers for us or provides us some pretty firm guidelines on how equal is equal. And the case law indicates that a total population deviation, which is the difference between the smallest ward and the largest ward, if that deviation is less than 10%, we can be regarded as one person, one vote compliant. Up to 16.4%? Why that number? Good question. But up to 16.4%, we might be considered compliant if we had a legitimate reason that could justify that. Anything above 16.4% deviation would be regarded as unconstitutional per the 14th amendment. And we'll cut to the chase here. According to our current map and the 2020 population, our current deviation is 16.3%. So fairly clear that, I'm sorry, our deviation is 20.4%. It was just under the guy, under the guidelines 10 years ago, so we did not redistrict then. But we are clearly above the guidelines this time around. So we talked about federal law, we talked about state law. What does Evanston City Code have to say about this? Evanston City Code specifies that we have nine wards, but offers no additional guidance into how to draw the map or how to balance the population. Past practice, based on the research that this committee did into, you know, 10 years ago, 20 years ago, 30 years ago, you know, indicates that we have taken additional criteria into account. And as a point of reference, we looked at the ordinance from 20, from 2003, which was the last time we redistricted. That ordinance specifically called out the federal and state guidelines that we've gone over and then enumerated a number of local conditions to take into account. Natural geographic boundaries, man-made geographic boundaries, minimization of voter confusion, consideration of communities of interest, traditional Evanston neighborhoods, and in full disclosure, the ordinance from 2003 did list protection, protection of incumbency as, as one of the factors. So this was kind of our starting point as we went into this process. We're not limited to these, these criteria, but this was the way to start our thinking. So here is our current map. And like I just said a few minutes ago, our current deviation is 20.4%. So very clearly, federal guidelines are indicating that we should be redistricting. This current map dates back to 2003, was drawn after the 2000 census, and we did not redistrict after the 2010 census. Because our, I wasn't on the council then, I can't speak for, for the thinking at the time, but the deviation in 2010 was 16.3, so we were just barely under the wire. But fairly clear that we do have to redistrict based on the 2020 census. So just for the, the record, these are the demographics of the current map with the 2020 census data. I won't read through this chart, but this does show that we have three wards, wards two, five, and, and eight that are majority non-white. So, committee findings to date, we agreed early on in this process that we do need to redistrict. Federal guidelines are fairly clear. So we have, as a committee, confirmed our intent to redistrict. We have also confirmed the importance of having at least three majority non-white wards, which we have now under the current map, and we would like to continue doing that with whatever new map we do end up approving. We have also confirmed an intent, an intent or desire to have downtown Evanston represented by multiple wards. That was an issue in previous redistricting processes. Downtown Evanston is currently represented by three wards, and it's our intent in this process to continue having downtown represented by, by multiple council members. This fourth bullet is, is maybe the most interesting one. We decided to pursue an incremental approach here. We, we talked about throwing the whole map out and starting over with a blank sheet of paper, but we decided to get as close as we can to, to equalizing populations through just a very light-touch approach, move, move in a few blocks here and a few blocks there from one ward to another to get the populations to balance and, and pursuing that incremental approach, which would not impact, which would impact as few residents as possible. Having said that, we're also aiming for a minimal deviation, as close to zero as possible, so we can accommodate future population shifts, some of which we have an idea about. But, you know, by the time the 2020, the 2030 census rolls around, our new developments will have occurred that are not even on anybody's radar screen right now. We don't know what our population is going to be in 2020, after 2030. But if we redistrict and draw a map with a very, very low deviation, we can absorb some change that will allow us to continue after the 2030 census with the current map, should we choose to do so. So, the process of public engagement over the months and, and deliberations that the committee have led us to offer this map as a proposed new map, and this map will be shared, has been shared with the public. It will be open, I'll get in a few minutes to our process moving forward, but, you know, we will take the next month to receive public input on this new map. And the purpose of the meeting tonight is to, is to have a council discussion on this new map. So what we've done here is, you know, has achieved that low-touch objective by just moving a few blocks here and a few blocks there. It's a bit of a Tetris game or a domino tumble. You can't move one thing without moving another, so it's not quite as simple as, you know, as ideally as it could have been. But what we've got here is a map that has a total population deviation of 3.4%. The outliers here are the second ward, which is 1.9% below average, and the fourth ward, which is 1.5% above average. We continue to have three wards, which are majority non-white. We continue to have downtown Evanston represented by multiple wards, the same three that currently represent downtown Evanston. And just as a tally of, you know, of minimizing voter impact, the number of, of residents that would be shifted from one ward to another under this map is just over 4,500. So we'll, I'll open the floor to discussion of this map in just a second. For the record, here are the demographics. We still maintain wards two, five, and eight as majority non-white. Here's a glance of these maps side by side to just kind of emphasize that we have taken this, this light-touch approach. Our planned process moving forward, after the council discussion tonight, is to continue receiving public feedback via an online mechanism, which if it's not set up now, will be set up very soon, and then discuss public feedback at the April committee meeting, which is scheduled for April 25. We've allowed ourselves another month to take public input into account and do any remapping that, that we see fit. And then at the May 23 meeting of the redistricting committee, the intent is to propose a final map for formal recommendation to council, which would then be approved by City Council in June, in June or thereabouts. So the map we're looking at tonight is, let's call this a draft map, subject to additional comment. This is not the map we are proposing for formal approval tonight. That will come in a couple of months. I will point out that this is almost as soon as reasonably can be expected. We didn't want to rush through this process prior to the special election in April. That would have been really confusing to people, but we wanted to get this done sooner rather than later. State law gives us a deadline of mid-November of 2024, so we are, you know, well ahead of the state, the state guidelines. Question, Mr. Mayor? Yeah. Yeah. And on par with, with the 2003 map, you know, three years after the census was when the, when the new map was released. So with that, I will open the floor for, for discussion and questions. And Mr. Mayor, I'll turn the chairmanship back to you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Reed, followed by Harris.
Yeah, thank you. This is a referral that I made, but I can't imagine a better chairperson for, for the role. So thank you, Councilmember Newsma, for your truly impressive leadership on this. I, I serve on the committee. I, I proposed an alternative map. I gave up that battle. I still support somewhat of an alternative map. I think we'll have more time on committee to have those discussions. I did get a chance to look at the maps that Carl Klein provided. I, I'm really interested in looking at it. The, the thing that I think was most limiting for myself was the consensus that we came to, that I wasn't in full agreement with, but it was consensus that we make just minor tweaks. And I, I do think there is some room to, to make larger tweaks, particularly, I'm looking, thinking about my ward, they were the ward that I represent, the eighth ward, which is, is an extremely diverse ward. I mean, one, it has the city's largest black population, but we also have a very strong, pretty much half of the ward that is comprised of single-family homes, and is not as diverse as other parts of the ward. And, you know, I'd be, and I'd be really interested personally in seeing a ward that has a stronger presence of renters and folks who, as was mentioned earlier in public comment, who are just a part, just as a part of the fabric of this community as folks who are homeowners, but oftentimes aren't either represented here on this body or their issues aren't represented fully in council. And so that is one of my goals is to, would be one of my goals, to increase the number of renters in the eighth ward, to keep that representation here on council, where historically it has been lacking. I think this might be the first time we've had two renters on the council at the same time, if not just renters, period, in quite a while. So with that in mind, I appreciate this, looking forward to the continued discussion and feedback from our colleagues.
Councilmember Harris.
So are we having, I know you said it's online, but we're not going to do an in-person discussion for people, especially the people that are now being affected? I wonder if we shouldn't have an in-person, two days or something?
We have a committee meeting, which will be in-person. In fact, two committees, two committee meetings between now and then. So any, yeah, feel free to invite affected residents to those committee meetings.
Okay.
And I've also made myself available as chair of the committee to come to ward meetings and present this map.
Okay. I just think we should make a big push to make sure, not just the council members of that ward, just that we put it out there.
Yeah.
Because our residents say they're not heard. I believe that they are, but I think when looking at this map, and I'll pay close attention, and maybe I will send emails to those that the changes would most definitely affect. And then I was wondering if you could go back to the photo that had the side-by-side comparison? I didn't get to take a picture.
It's all in our packet.
I know, but. I wanted to. Thanks.
Mr. Cummings?
I just wanted to, Councilmember Harris raised a good point. I just wanted to point out that after May 11, all of our meetings will need to be in person. So just wanted to point that out.
Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you. Jonathan, can you tell us those dates of the next, are those, are those up there? So the next two committee meetings are the 25th and the 23rd. So those would be April 25th and May 23rd, the opportunity for the public?
Yeah.
Great. And can you, with regard to our being above the guidelines, it was really just between two wards, right, that were above the guidelines, between three and nine, correct?
Those were the outliers, like the total deviation is defined, you know, by definition, the smallest and largest. So those are two wards, but...
I mean, because of that, that deviation, that's what really triggers us to do that because of the deviation between three and nine.
Three was definitely, here are the numbers here, but three was definitely the outlier, you know, almost 12% above average, nine was almost 9% below average. But, you know, look at the others. Fifth ward was 8% below average, first ward was, was well below average. So we, we'll, we have to look at the, at the whole picture here. It's not just driven by one or two wards. Theoretically, if what you're suggesting is there were, if there were a way to move some territory from the third ward, you know, to the ninth ward, the math would work out, but we'd be, you know, violating, you know, the natural and man-made bound, I suppose, man-made boundary in this case.
I mean, we do that anywhere, anyway, in other parts. I'm just, wanted to point that out, that it could be resolved that simply by moving some of nine into the third. We do cross the tracks in other places. I just, but, and I also want to thank Carl Klein for presenting. I think those maps are really worth looking at. I agree, and I really thank him for his work on that. I also want to point out, and I know we all agreed to this, but ideally, really, this sort of a committee should be a third party, right? I mean, I know we didn't have time, and this is why we're doing it, but really, in principle, a redistricting committee should not be made up of council members, right? I mean, ideally. Isn't that considered best practice? Okay. Thank you.
No one is asking to speak for first time, so we go back to Councilmember Reed with two and a half minutes left.
Yeah, I, I want to address two things. One, just to highlight, it was asked earlier about the calendar, and I think Mayor Biss made a, a face potentially, I didn't see it, but Councilmember Newsma did. I think that was about this, our deadline being in mid-November. My natural inclination would be to think that our deadline should be before petitioning starts. I don't know if that's some fluke in state law, but I think we're still on track to, to do that, so that's important. To Councilmember Kelly's questioning about how this should be handled moving forward, we're here now, and we're going to approve this map, or some map, but I, I would co-sponsor something that would, and I've, I've mentioned this before at the top of this process, I do think that a better standard is that the elected officials aren't choosing who our voters are. It's, and I think the guidelines that have been put in place help ensure that, you know, we're, we're not being political. I mean, it's kind of hard to not be, but, and so I, I fully agree with that, and so I would support moving forward with, with that in the future. But I think this map helps curtail some of those concerns, or this process, I should say.
Seeing no further comments, I just want to thank the chair and the other three members of the committee for putting in really a lot of work. I think this is really very, very impressive. In the spirit of responding to the last few comments, I am myself a longstanding and true believer, supporter of not having the people who are going to run on a map draw those maps, something that's a, an extremely losing battle I fought when I was in Springfield. And I will say that I fought that extremely losing battle because I participated in every district process as a state legislator, and I saw some pretty awful things happen. And so for me, it wasn't an abstract sort of theoretical thing. It was, hey, here's a bunch of really non-public-interested types of decisions that elected officials could make when drawing their own maps, and we should ban that. And I'm really pleased to say that none of that's gone on here, that you've clearly gone through a process that's based on your knowledge of the community and your interest in drawing a map. It's consistent with the stated principles that I think are principles that the whole community could agree on. So I just want to say thank you for that work. I know, I know it's, it's not easy, it's sort of weirdly technical and boring at times, but getting it right is really important, and thank you again. That brings us to the consent agenda. I'm unaware of any items that must be removed from the consent agenda because of failure to make it out of committee, so as long as no one wants to correct me on that front, are there any items that folks would like to see taken off the consent agenda? Councilmember Kelly?
P3. P3, P4, and A4, and A14.
So, I heard P3, P4, A4, and A14.
ED1, please.
ED1. So, at this time, we have five items so far, A4, A14, P3, P4, and ED1. Is there anything else? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
A4, A14, P3, P4, and ED1. Second.
Councilmember Nguyen moves approval of the entire consent agenda with the exceptions of A4, A14, P3, P4, and ED1. Councilmember Harris seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed? Councilmember Herakakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and the consent agenda with the five previously named exceptions is passed. This brings us therefore to A4. Would someone care to make a motion on this item?
Approve, I move for the approval of contact, contract with Landmark Contractors, Inc. for the Oakton Street Corridor Improvement Project, bid 2309.
I'll second.
Councilmember Harris moves approval of the contract with Landmark Contractors, Incorporated. Councilmember Nusma seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Kelly.
So, I pulled this off. I'm not opposed to the contract with Landmark Contractors. However, I am opposed to the funding this with general obligation bonds. We recently had a discussion, which I opposed greenlighting up to 17-point-something million dollars in bonds, given our large surplus that has been revealed only recently. It's now grown even bigger to over $34 million last year, so I don't think we should be slowly, you know, anywhere at the $17 million bond at this point. I think there's no reason, I can support this project and say yes to this, but I would not support, right now, approving a $2.85, $2.8 million bond. This is going to be at a relatively high rate. Bond market is volatile. We, again, are going to be discussing an over $34 million surplus tomorrow night at finance and budget, so I cannot support that. So, I would like to amend it, to support this, but to remove the funding through bond on this.
So, you definitely have to type it up. Is there a second to the amendment?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the?
Sure. I would like to, based on that we are now going to be discussing an ever-growing surplus, which went from seven to 14 to now, to 25 to now, $34 million surplus last year, which I imagine might, will continue to grow, that we not right now commit to bonding out $2.8 million for this project. I support the project, but I would just like to remove funding this through a bond. So, I would like to amend it to fund it through our surplus budget, but not, and not through a high-interest bond.
I will second it for a discussion, but then I'll have some questions. So, in that case, there is a second to the amendment, so it's then worth your time to write it down. So, we'll just, so do you, Councilmember Kelly, are you comfortable allowing the discussion to continue while you formulate this? In that case, Councilmember Reed.
Thank you. Ms. Biggs, our chief engineer. So, this is a project we're discussing, A4, that affects the Eighth Ward and Ninth Ward. This is something that, you know, has been in the works since, I think, just before even my time here as a council member. So, one, can you, can you just give us a bit of background about the increase in cost? And then I'll ask a follow-up question after that.
Certainly. Members of City Council, Mayor, City Manager Stone, City Clerk, my name is Laura Biggs. I'm the city engineer. This project began back in 2019 to 2020 time period. There's been a long history of issues with traffic on Oakton. There are three elementary schools. Over the years, there's been a number of things tried, additional crosswalks added, lowering the speed limit, removing sections of it from being a truck route. And throughout all of that, there's still been serious concerns that are raised, traffic incidents that happen involving pedestrians, particularly around the schools. And so, although staff has tried things piecemeal, we decided at the behest of the council member at the time to seek out a contract with a consulting firm to look at a section of this road more holistically, try to make bigger changes that addressed along the entire length some of the challenges. And throughout that time period, most of this work has happened during the pandemic. And so, it was rather challenging for trying to get a robust public response, and there were a lot of delays while we tried to wait to a point where we could do public engagement more effectively. However, you know, this project did move along. We received a grant for it. We went into final design, finished it, sent it out to bid, and we happened to send it out to bid during a period of really unprecedented increases in construction pricing. I am not thrilled with the amount of construction inflation that is occurring, and I do not love coming to the City Council for every project this year saying there's a construction pricing increase. But it does seem to be something that is a nationwide problem. And so, one way that we have been looking at things, anecdotally, I've talked with some of our neighboring communities, Skokie, for example, they're all opening bids at higher than what they planned to. All the people that I've talked to, it's been a very common problem that consultants we work with are indicating is a common problem. And I've looked at a variety of construction cost indexes to also try to determine, is there a trend? What's the order of magnitude? I will say, it is unlikely ever that a construction cost index will accurately pinpoint exactly what is happening in Evansville, Illinois. You know, they are meant to be a nationwide look at an industry trend in most cases, or best, a Chicago-area look. But they all are indicating that, basically, there was a period of time between 2021, 2023 today, where we were seeing approximately 10 to 15% inflation per year in construction costs. And this project also suffered from that. There were a couple of other issues that increased the cost, one of them being that at one point, we had taken part of the work to upgrade the traffic signal at Home Depot and the old recycling center, and planned to have that work completed by whichever developer brought the recycling center when the City Council elected to keep that in-house. We still need to make the traffic signal improvements, both for the Oakton project and for our continued operations as the municipal storage center and animal shelter. So, that project, that work did get added back into this because this project includes a lot of traffic signal upgrades.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And with that, to be clear, we're looking for a new dollar amount of $2.8 million, $2.85?
No, the $2.85 million and then the $500,000.
My apologies, yes. So, I'm sorry. So, what is the new dollar amount that we're?
Slightly over $4 million, I'm sorry.
Slightly over $4 million. Okay, no, that's fine. And, and my apologies, Councilmember Kelly is wanting to remove this from a bond, so how much of that is the bond, would be bonded out for, the entire $4 million, or?
No, actually, the staff recommendation is to keep the original $2.85 million that was budgeted in the adopted 2023 budget as general obligation bonds, and the excess to take that from the general fund cash surplus. So, when I have talked about this with Hitesh Desai, our chief financial officer, he had indicated that there is funding available to cover this excess. We did not talk about funding the whole amount of the project from the cash surplus, but he did, he has indicated to me several times, and there has been discussion that I've observed at the Finance and Budget Committee about how to handle some of the excess construction costs, as well as the base selling of debt this year versus the surpluses that have come in for the general fund.
Thank you. So, what you're saying is that there is not, as it's presented currently, a plan to use general obligation bonds to fund this?
No, currently, the staff plan is to use the $2.85 million. That can be amended by the City Council. Alternatively, the City Council could decide a set amount of the total 2023 general obligation bonds that were proposed to be abated, not through the sale of a general obligation bond, but through a cash surplus. That would be looking at it in a more holistic way, and I don't believe that conversation's happened yet. But we also have not sold the 2023 GO bonds yet.
Right. And Councilmember Kelly, your motion that has been sent in?
Yeah, I sent it in. I sent it to Luke and you and Daniel, but...
Yes, just for clarity, your motion is to preclude the possibility of using bond funds. Is that correct?
To fund it through surplus, that 2.8 instead of through bonds, to fund it through our surplus, which is now, you know, increased.
Yes. Is Satya? Is on, no?
Good evening. I'm on the, yeah, remote, Councilmember.
Yes. So, so we have a pretty strong reserve. That is correct. Correct.
Yes, but the $34 million is not the correct number.
What is the correct number?
The correct number, I mean, would change. The audit has just begun. We have given the financials, but it could range anywhere between 24 to 26 million. Operating surplus for the...
Over, yeah, over our 16.6 cents, 16 points.
No, 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 no. This is the operating surplus for 2022, which, operating surplus. The total fund balance, which we expect, if we end the year somewhere between 24 and 26 million, we would have the fund balance of around $56 million, and we would require around 20 million. So, we would have around 35 to 36 million in excess.
Okay, that's, that's a lot of money. So, I hear...
But again, I mean, I would just tell this thing, and I think Finance and Budget Committee has discussed this a couple of times, and again, it would be discussion tomorrow. Look, this is the number that I'm talking about, 22. What are the things to consider? 23 budget was passed with a $10 million deficit, so obviously, that's $10 million right there. We have these new contracts for police, fire, absentee is underway, so it's roughly around $5 million for that. Based on conversation with Laura, what she just mentioned about the overage in our construction cost, and if we look at around 10, 15% on our $20 million project, it could be around $3, $3.5 million. So, we would need those money which are not budgeted for incremental cost, the wage increases. At the same time, we have this insurance fund and the parking fund, lot kind of lagging compared to the policies adopted by the City Council, and we might need around $6 to $7 million there. And so, yeah, I mean, if you add up those things, animal shelter project, which still has already approved, which is over by 1.6 million, so obviously, we'll have to fund that. So, there is almost like if you add up these numbers, and this could be like a, and Laura mentioned, holistic consideration, it's like around 20 to 25 million, which we would need to cover all these unbudgeted items.
Which, which would still leave us above our, well above our 16.6. Last time we were here and we were talking...
Yeah, you're right. It could be still, even after we provide for this, yeah, you're right, maybe a $10 million.
Yeah.
But the thing is, for the council to consider, are we going to issue any bond at all? Or it would be totally funded by general fund, and what would happen next year in '24? So, these are the kind of, sort of, big item.
Yeah, I appreciate that. So, last time we were here and we were talking about our huge reserve fund, I made a reference to a Beatles song that I don't think anybody got, so I won't do that again. But we have a lot of money, and we have, we're storing it, and we need to get that money out into the community working for us, and I hear the concern about, you know, 2024, 2025, unless Northwestern decides to purchase the, where the Bears are playing now. I think we're going to be in pretty good condition next year. And I think a little bit further into the future, you know, 23 years into the future. And so, you know, with that, I think it's responsible where we can to reduce our usage of bonds. I, of course, as the Eighth Ward council member who represents about half of Oakton, certainly understand the need for this project to move forward. I've had many, I've had many residents reaching out, reach out over time about this. I got to meet with staff early on to hear the need for this. I support the council member's amendment to draw down, to make an investment into our future by using our general fund reserve balance rather than dipping, rather than bonding out for this. And I think if we can have another year or another few years where we do not issue new bonds, we'll be setting up the next generation for more financial prosperity. And so, I support this. And just lastly, I'll ask Ms. Biggs, or maybe this is more, whoever this is more appropriate for, but it, this seems like it wouldn't impact the project where the money's coming from, right? So, as long as we put the money towards the project, we're in a good place. And so, you don't, do you have an objection to using general fund reserve?
No. No, there, the funding source doesn't actually impact, in this particular case, how the project's implemented.
Okay. Well, with that, I encourage a yes vote on A4 overall, but I also would encourage a yes vote on the council member's amendment. Thank you.
Councilmember Nusma, followed by Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll speak to the amendment. When it comes down to it, I'll vote for A4. But to the amendment, you know, I think it really makes sense, if we have extra money, to not borrow as much. That's fairly obvious. Help me understand strategically the best way to wrestle with that, with that issue. Is it to have that discussion one by one as items come up in front of council? Or is it best to have that discussion later in the year where our projections for 2023 are going to be closer and better refined, closer to reality, and have a discussion at some later point to say, okay, we said we might bond up to whatever the number was we discussed last time, but we have all this extra money. What do we want to pay for with bonds, and what do we want to pay for with cash in the bank? We can have that discussion later, right? We don't have to have that discussion right now.
Yes. So, the spending of bonds is tracked to an account number, but where the revenue for that account number comes from is really the purview of the Finance Division. So, if the city, it really doesn't matter for the implementation of the capital program. The City Council can really, with, talking with Hitesh, I mean, that's, that's the purview of finance as to when the best opportunities to sell bonds or to offset some of the bond costs are. But from my point of view, implementing the capital program, it's not, it doesn't matter.
You just need the money, wherever, wherever it comes from.
Yes.
So, I think it makes sense to certainly have this conversation, but not in a kind of piecemeal way. Let's wait until later in the year, see what our financial position is likely to be by the end of the year, both on the revenue and expense side. Look at all the other things we would like to spend this money on, like our pension obligations, and then make a decision at that time, you know, a holistic and fully informed decision. So, yeah, I oppose the amendment as it's structured, but... So, yeah, I, I oppose the amendment as it's structured, but endorse the underlying concept of borrowing less if we don't have to.
Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. I think Councilmember Newsma said it. I just think it's important when we're looking at our finances is that we look at it in its totality and not just, let's pay money here, let's spend money here, but look at all of the projects that we wish to do, what we have available to do, and move in that way, not one by one. So I agree with Councilmember Newsma. Thank you.
Councilmember Revel.
I'm trying to just remember the discussion we had, I guess, at our last meeting. Am I correct in remembering that we don't actually issue the general obligation bonds until deep into the summer or when we have a much clearer idea of what our revenues are? Because I think there's some concern about whether our revenue projections are on target or not. So I, I agree with the idea of not issuing bonds that we don't have to issue, but I agree that we don't need to make that decision today.
At this time, no one is requesting to speak for a first time, so we go back to Councilmember Kelly with three minutes and 45 seconds left.
So can we simply remove the funding source? Because it seems that nobody wants to commit to a bond, including Jonathan Newsma. I'm not sure how you'd like me to structure that amendment, Jonathan. If you want to give me, you know, words for that, different words in the way I've said it, we could, so I question, can we approve the project without the funding source? I think it's, I think it's really irresponsible to, to bond this right now with the large surplus that we have. It's, bond volatility this year is there, and what we earn with money sitting on the bank, sitting in the bank on the table is, you know, a fraction of what we end up paying on a 20-year bond, but we, the, the burden that we load up on our residents. So this would be, makes no sense to be, to give a, to say, yes, we're going to pay for this with a $2.8 million bond at this point. So I, I support the project, but I'd like to know, since, would you rather move this to Finance and Budget, this whole project for discussion, as to whether it's bonded out or paid for with our large surplus? I mean, I hope folks would just approve amending this to pay for it right now with our surplus. It'll still, we'll still have a very robust surplus.
I, I hesitate to speak for anyone, but just as the person kind of accepting motions, what I understood the point to be was that the passage of this does not obligate the issuance of bonds. It simply names the bonds as a revenue source to allow the project to begin, and that the advice is to pass it as is without an amendment with the understanding that before bonds are issued, we'll have a real conversation, not about a particular project on Oakton, however important it might be, but about our entire financial picture and what we could utilize our reserves for at that point and potentially use them to significantly increase the bond, the bond issuance that had been contemplated in the 2023 budget. Is that a fair characterization, Councilmember?
Yes.
Okay.
So may I just, I just feel like we need to give responsible direction to staff, and I don't feel like we're really making a decision here based on the facts that are before us. And I'd really like to see this council take a responsible position with regard to issuing yet more bonds when we have a large surplus. This, to me, seems very clear and obvious, that we should amend it to remove giving directions to issue bond for this. The, the money is available. So that's what I'd like to see our council do this evening.
Again, no one is requesting to speak for the first time, so we'll go back to Councilmember Reed with 30 seconds left.
I'll take a slightly different approach. I, I, I don't think that, I wouldn't categor, personally categorize this, approving A4 is irresponsible financially. But I do think that, you know, seeing that this is a, you know, a substantial but relatively small dollar amount, that this helps us practice a bit of restraint by making, by pulling this out of the general fund reserve now. You know, I, I think, I think by, by setting this up as if we are going to potentially fund this through our general obligation bonds for 2023, I, I do think gives us an easy choice. And I think that's, because it's, it's easy to issue bonds and know that you'll have 20-some-odd years to pay it off, and it doesn't really feel like it hits the books now. And, and so that is somewhat of the easy way out, and this is in part why we're in the issues, in, in somewhat of the financial... I don't know, I'm looking for a word that isn't too overdramatic, but why we're in the place that we are now.
Could I ask you to bring your comments to a close?
Yeah, I will bring my, they're bringing themselves to an end. So I, I would ask that we, we approve moving this from the general obligation fund, or at least, you know, tagging this in a way that, that does not set us up to essentially have to issue new bonds. And lastly, I'll just point out that Councilmember Kelly is, is spot on with the, where our bond market is now. I think the only bonds this council has approved were in 2021 or 2022, when interest rates were actually very low, and we refinanced a lot of, of our previous debt. And so really, kudos to Hitesh and the team for bringing that before us. But I do think we're in a very different time now, and just looking at the financial picture of, of our city for the next 20-some-odd years, let's, I'll, I'll end here. We can, I, I would recommend drawing down from the general fund reserve. Thank you.
Thank you. No one else, no one else is requesting to speak for a first or second time, so we go back to Councilmember Kelly with two minutes and 10 seconds left.
So obviously, I'm, you know, very determined to have this amendment pass, so I'd like to know if there's other wording that we, that you'd like to see, Jonathan, in terms of giving direction, you know, not to issue a bond, if there's some other way to phrase this that would make you more comfortable.
I, I feel like you're not understanding my point here. Like, I agree with you that I'd rather not borrow money if we don't have to, but it's early in the year, we're not going to be issuing bonds until August or September. Let's make a fully informed decision in August and September as to how much bond we want to issue and where to use that money. Voting for this project as, as it appears on our agenda tonight does not obligate us to issue $2.85 million worth of bonds. If, my understanding is it really, it kind of earmarks that amount of a, a potential bond issue for this project, which means we couldn't go higher than that, but it, we could certainly go lower if we want to use some cash on hand to pay for this.
So I just want to make clear, it does say that this A4 is, the funding will be provided from the Capital Improvement Fund 2023 GO bonds. So I, I want to, I maintain my, I understand you would like to go ahead and leave that direction as it stands in this. I would not, I would like to move forward amending this to, to remove paying for this through GO bonds.
Councilmember Burns.
Do we need to name the source as part of some, you know, grant stipulation, or what is the, why are we required to name the source of funds? Is that something that we're communicating to ourselves, or is it, is the grant contingent on us doing that?
Um...
And when is the project, I'm sorry, before you answer that, when is the project, when do we want this project to, to be underway?
This project will start in June. So there, there is, actually, I think it might start in May, but late May or early June. So there is, you know, there's wee time for ordering supplies and materials.
But even the exercise that I just heard, where we wait to the end of the year and we'll have a better sense? I mean, we don't really have time for that.
No, that's not, the project goes ahead. The project goes ahead.
So this is funded by bonds?
The bond money doesn't even exist until later in the year.
Okay.
So at the time that we would issue the bonds, we could say, oh, wait, we've got a bunch of money sitting around, we'll just issue fewer bonds.
Okay.
So that, that bond money, that money has not been borrowed, it will not be borrowed when the first shovel hits the ground. It'll be borrowed at a time that's based on our own internal calendar.
Yeah, I guess I still don't see why, I mean, why are we communicating this to, if we know that that's an option, why do we need to communicate it that we're going to, that it's a possible, that it's a resource of funding for the project? Let's just say we support the project and revisit how we're going to pay for it when it's time. I, I could see if it was contingent on a grant. I could see a grant stipulating that in order to receive the grant, right, you need to identify a source of revenue. And I think I've seen grants like that before, I can't remember. But absent that, I, I'm trying to find some middle ground between where Councilmember Kelly is and where I think everybody else is, and if we don't have to name it, then, you know, I, I am in support of removing it, and, because we're not going to fund it in June through bonds anyway, so let's just remove that and revisit this when we need to. And also support, I, I would have supported if there was time, sending this through our Finance and Budget Committee. I think we really need to, that committee needs to, to look at some of this. And one of the working groups is looking at our capital improvement process. I think we could do a better job of kind of focusing in on that, but I do think this is a better discussion for our Finance and Budget Committee, and ideally, we'd have a plan on how to do this, and then that, then it would go to council. So I do agree with that as well.
Mr. Cummings.
I just wanted to, whether their funding source is identified, so first of all, the city council's already appropriated the money via the budget. That's the one thing the city council has to do. And I think that the funding source, and I believe I heard Ms. Biggs state this, is that the funding source of it being the general obligation bonds is what was budgeted by the city council in terms of the cap, in terms of the Capital Improvement Fund. What I heard Hitesh say at a previous meeting was that those bonds don't, those bonds don't get issued, and I actually don't even know if we issued bonds in 2022. Those bonds don't get issued until you guys issue them. So it's a matter of, you know, it's a contingency almost, from, from what I have gleaned from all these discussions, from Ms. Biggs, from Mr. Desai, that, you know, the funding source is a matter of transparency, you have to tell the public where you're spending, where you're getting the money from. You don't necessarily have to name the funding source if you don't want to, but in my experience in dealing with this particular council, you kind of want to tell the residents where the money's coming from. But it's listed as to what was budgeted, as was from general obligations bonds, but if the city never issues those bonds, it comes out of the general fund.
Exactly. And I mean, I, I feel very comfortable going to my ward and saying, we're, we're going to pay for it, because that's what we're vote, we could vote on today, that we are committed one way or another to this project moving forward, and it's either going to be general fund or it's going to be through a bond. So, I mean, I feel comfortable doing that. Again, if it was contingent on us receiving a grant, I'd be down for it, but I don't think it is. And, and I agree with Councilmember Kelly. I think we need to think through this a bit more before we make any commitments to issue bonds. And again, I would really love to see, I wish we had enough time to, to take this through the Finance and Budget Committee, because I think that's the committee where we could develop a plan on how to address this. That's all, Chair.
Point of order, while you have the floor, would you like to make a friendly amendment so we can maybe continue our meeting?
I'll let Councilmember Kelly...
I don't know if Councilmember Kelly has time.
So... They want to deal with this first, though, but go ahead, Chair. That's all.
So at this time, no one is asking to speak for the first time, so we'll go first to folks who want a second crack, beginning with Councilmember Newsma with 3:15 left.
I forget where I was when I, when I pressed the button. But we're, let's, let's just clarify, a vote on the underlying motion of A4 is to approve moving forward with this project. If we vote on the, on the issue as it's presented, you know, we are saying up to $2.85 million may come from bonds, but we're not obligating $2.85 million worth of bonds to be issued tonight. We have, this is one of, I don't know how many, 15, 20, couple dozen capital improvement projects. And so we need to have a strategic discussion here. I don't want to have this discussion for this project tonight, and another project in two weeks, and another project in two weeks after that, and another project two weeks after that. That is not a wise use of our time and resources, and it doesn't actually accomplish anything if we're not issuing the bond until later in the summer. Let's have the discussion holistically then, see where all the projects net out, and make a fully informed decision. That's all I'm saying. It's fairly obvious to me, and I'm in complete agreement with Councilmember Kelly that we don't want to borrow money that we don't have to, that we don't have to borrow. It's like, we agree on the underlying, your underlying objective here. Let's pursue a strategic approach to making a, to fully informed and analytical decision rather than a knee-jerk kind of reactionary approach on an ad hoc basis.
Still, no one is requesting to speak for the first time, so we go back to Councilmember Revel with four and a half minutes left.
Well, I agree with Councilmember Newsma's recommendation that we not do this piecemeal, that we have a comprehensive discussion later in a few months when we have a clearer idea, clearer idea of where we are financially. And two, Councilmember Burns' suggestion that we could just approve this without identifying the funding source. I mean, our whole agenda is replete with, with, you know, expend, with projects that we're approving, and they always identify where the funding source is coming from, and I think that's what Councilmember, I mean, Corporation Council Cummings indicated when we were talking about transparency to our residents, that we're saying, here's, here's what, we're approving this, and this is where we're going to come up with the money.
So I would, I would just offer an example. When I go to the grocery store to buy groceries, I can use a credit card or write a check from a specific account, but I have to tell them how I'm going to pay for it. But when it's time to pay the credit card bill, I can enter into a long-term relationship with my credit card company and pay for 20 years by paying the minimum amount, or I can literally just pay it off at the end of the month and not owe any interest. But I still have to tell people how I'm paying for the groceries that I purchase. And so I need to know how this is getting paid, how we're telling people we're paying for it, but how in the end, the back end, that is, that could be another discussion.
Can, can I, there's more people in line, but I just, I don't want to, I don't want to, I'm just concerned about something that the Corporation Council said. The $2.85 million number is provided for in the budget, correct?
Correct.
Which passed as an ordinance last year, correct?
Correct.
The, the proposed amendment is in effect a kind of a budget amendment, in the sense that it's seeking to amend the budget.
Yes.
But it's not an ordinance that actually amends the literal budget. The budget would not be amended. I, I'm, I mean, I guess I'm articulating my preference here. I, I just feel concerned about the ad hoc nature of doing something which is effectively an amendment to the budget in the middle of an approval of a particular project without actually passing an ordinance to amend the budget. Is, am I wrong to be concerned about that?
You would not be wrong in, to even further your point, when the bonds are issued, that's also an ordinance. But we haven't issued, we're not talking about issuing any bonds tonight, so there's no ordinance to your point. There's just approval of contract, there's no ordinance before the body.
Point of order, or point of...
Point of what?
Point of, point of information, yes, not order. Just to be clear, the $2.8 million isn't listed in the budget. There may be a line item for general obligation bonds 2023, but is there, I don't believe that there's specifically $2.8 million for the Oakton corridor improvement project in the budget ordinance. I don't believe our budget ordinance gets into that level of detail. Am I incorrect on that?
Can, can I respond?
So you're saying it's like in the packet describing the CIP, but not the budget ordinance?
Yeah, the budget ordinance is just, and please, if I'm wrong, somebody tell me, but...
Yes, I mean, yes, this is, this Councilmember, the budget ordinance is the total number.
Right. So $2.8 million isn't listed there, so this wouldn't be an amendment to the budget, to be clear. This would just say that, hey, out of whatever total line item we, or marker that we place there for that line item, this would have no impact on that. So I just want to be clear on that.
All right. So still no one's asking to speak for the first time, so still we're in second cracks, and that is Councilmember Burns with two minutes left.
So in June, we're going to start paying out contractors or architects or someone starting in June for this project?
Yes.
And how is that being funded?
Goes to an account number that's designated for the 2023 general obligation bond, but is within the Capital Improvement Fund. Now, because we did not sell bonds last year, my understanding is that the Capital Improvement Fund cash balance is actually very, very low at the moment. And so ultimately, what's going to happen, as the Capital Improvement Fund is going to have to start borrowing from the general fund in order to make payments, and a lot of this will happen behind the scenes until a budget amendment is made to, or a bond is sold to replenish the accounts. And Hitesh, you can correct me if I'm incorrect in saying this, but...
No, you're right. No, you're right. I mean, Lara, you're right. And yes, again, the city council and the mayor. The one thing which I think Councilmember Newsma and so many made, I mean, we come to the city council for the issuance of bond. When we feel the market is right, we did not issue the bond because the market wasn't right. So obviously, we need to, and at that time, council can always have the direction that, okay, no, we said, yeah, we proposed these funds. I mean, there's projects to be funded out of the CIP and the geo-bonds. But what is the general fund? What is the surplus? What is the unallocated money out of general fund? How much of that can be used for the CIP projects? And you can reduce the bond amount, even if you fill the first step, whether it's right or wrong to issue the bond. That's the first thing. If you say, no, we can't issue the bond, that's over. Secondly, if you say, yes, we can issue, but it does show me the general fund money available. And then you can reduce the bond amount. And instead, it would be paid out of the general fund surplus. So the whole point is, yes, I mean, you are not approving any bond issue. You are not committing yourself to issuing the bond just because you are approving the project. Obviously, I have given the example of 2022 bonds where we issued, approved the projects to be funded out of '22, we never issued that. The other thing which I would stress with Lara says that, I mean, that the CIP fund balance is depleting. Right now, it is around $1.8 million. Cash is a little higher because we haven't made a big payment to the either. The moment they come with their payment of around seven, eight million, the cash would be down to one, one and a half million. So at some point, we will need some source of funding. This was discussed as finance budget. That's why we have even the line of credit option. That, okay, if we think that, okay, we need the money now, but the market is still not good, I can tap into the general fund reserve. If that's not available, I can tap into the line of credit for a temporary purpose. But at some point, city council will have to make the decision for a long-term funding once there are kind of the market improves.
Thank you. If I could reclaim my time. So I understand, I think this council understands what we can do. And I was with you when it, in turn, when there was an item that we needed to pass that allowed us to refund the general fund up to a certain amount. I was with you on that. Part of this, which I don't think people are totally getting, is we're trying to, we're trying to send a different message, right, about how we're going to handle bonds and handle our budget moving forward, which I don't think everybody may understand and even agree with. But that's certainly the spirit in which I'm approaching this discussion. I want to send a different message to our community when they write about this, right? And I want, frankly, I want to send a different message even to this council. And so in thinking about that, I think the more realistic way to say how this is funded is actually how it's funded, that it is going to be funded initially through CIP fund, right? Then it's going to, what I'm hearing is, it's likely going to, they're going to need to borrow money from our general fund. And then it may, right, be paid for coming from general, from general obligation bonds. If we're talking about transparency, that is literally what is going to take place. Aside from, you know, the final decision to go out on a bond. So if we want to communicate exactly what we're going to do and we want to be transparent, that's what we should indicate. And that's what I'm willing to support this evening. Because that's what's going to happen. We're not funding this initially out of any bond. We're going CIP, then we're probably going to have to borrow out of the general fund. And then we may, right, if we don't have, come up with another plan, we may use general obligation bonds. And that's what I'm willing to support. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, no one is asking to speak for a first or a second time. So we go to third cracks, Councilmember Newsma with a minute 40 left.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What we're proposing here is no different than any other capital improvement project in terms of the inside baseball about how it gets funded. We use some money that we have to pay the initial bills. And eventually, we, if we have to, take out a long-term loan called a bond. This is no different.
This is true.
And I did suggest that. Sorry, Chair, I just want to be clear. That was not what I was trying to suggest.
Right. I think we're ready to vote on this motion. Let's, let's move on.
I, yeah, but with no one asking to speak for a first, second, or third time, we're going to go to fourth cracks, Councilmember Kelly with a minute 30.
Thank you. So first, I just want to point out, when we pass our budget, we pass our budget, CIP budget, based on the needs. And that's how we decide to levy and based on our revenue and everything else. And yes, we did pass a budget that included 17 million, about a $17 million potential bond in '23. But we were also, if you want to talk about ad hoc, Daniel, and saying, well, that would mean we'd increase our budget by 2.8. We also passed a budget with an understanding that there is a $14.1 million surplus, which is now increased by almost $20 million. So, I mean, so that was also not available to us and presented to us at the time of passing our budget. This absolutely, and I agree 100% with Alderman Revelle, we should be absolutely transparent with our taxpayers. And I think it's, you know, we do want to send, and also in concurrence with Councilmember Burns, a message that we are about fiscal discipline here. And we have a very large surplus budget. This, this item A4 says that the funding will be provided through a go-bond. And at this point, we should not be giving that, we should not be saying that. So I'm simply, I'm going to maintain the amendment, that that be removed. The funds are there. We need to send the message. I agree with you, Councilmember Burns, and I agree with Councilmember Revelle, that we should be transparent about it. If, you know, later on, it turns out we need to issue bonds, you know, down the road, we look at it at the Finance and Budget Committee. But until then, I think we have full obligation to our taxpayers. We are at close to a half a billion dollar in debt obligation on our residents' backs right now between our pension, our public safety pensions, and our bond debt. And I'm very proud of this council for not issuing any bonds last year and for fully funding our pensions. Our ratings went up, our debt went down. Let's stay on that course. Thank you.
Thank you. So the motion before the body is the.
Point of information, and I'll just use this really quick. Just to be clear, that, because I heard this concern and I want to make sure this is clear for everybody, that one, this, what's written is not, you know, transparent in the way that folks discussed because it doesn't tell us exactly how this is going to be funded. And two, approving this as is.
When you say point of information.
Well, no, the point of information is just to make sure that we, I want to make sure. So what's written here is not what's actually going to happen. Is that correct? Yes. And then, secondly, the budget, this, essentially approving this, A4 as written, to your concern earlier, would require a budget amendment. Is that correct? Potentially, you know, if our capital improvement fund is low and we will have to move money from the general fund to capital improvement, that requires a budget amendment? No?
So the.
Or yes? I just need a response from someone.
Councilmember, yeah, if the general fund expenditure exceeds the budgeted level, we need the budget amendment. But I would just clarify one thing. When we talk about using the general fund surplus, we are talking about not a loan. We are talking about just kind of a, using that surplus as like a, transferring money from general fund to CIP, which is not coming back to general fund because of the general fund decent fund balance situation. So we have to keep in mind, when I say at some point, council will have to make a decision about the bond, because there is like a, we did not issue the bond last year, but the projects have moved forward or are moving forward for around 15 million. 23 bond projects are around 15 million. So I don't know whether council has tried to approve almost 25 to 30 million dollar transfer from general fund to the CIP without any intention to give it back to the general.
Thank you very much. So the motion before the body is a motion to amend item A4 by removing the bond amount and instead asking, directing that amount to come from the general fund cash balance. Would the clerk please take the role on this amendment?
Councilmember Wen?
No.
Councilmember Newsma?
No.
Councilmember Burns?
No.
Councilmember Revelle?
No.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haraqaris?
No.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
No.
With two voting in favor and six voting against, the motion does not pass. The motion now before us then is the unamended A4. Would the clerk please take the role on the motion to pass A4, which has not been amended?
Councilmember Wen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Oh.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haraqaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With six voting in favor and two voting against, the motion carries and item A4 is passed. This now brings us to item A14. Would someone care to make a motion on item A14?
I move for the approval of the contract award to Worksbe to provide a shared pool of 80 hours a month for virtual executive assistance service to council members.
Second.
Councilmember Harris moves approval of the contract award to Worksbe. Councilmember Reed, seconds. Councilmember Burns?
Yes, so there was an error in the contract that we received. It was an error on Worksbe's part. They put 100 active working hours at 7,800 a month instead of the 80 hours that, that we previously discussed. The, there is a slight increase from the 5,616 a month that we approved because we've now gone from signing a 12-month agreement to a month-to-month. We did that because some of the concerns at APW were about concerns related to performance issues and criminal conduct and our ability to terminate if we so, if we decided to. And in order to make sure that we can terminate with a 45-day notice, with or without cause, we've now gone from, again, a 12-month contract to a month-to-month contract. And so the monthly cost will be, will go from 5,616 to 6,240. We approved $68,042, I believe. And what I also want to note, though, is that we don't need to increase the amount because this negotiation, having taken as long as it has, we're really only going to have this contract for about nine months before we kind of pass the next budget. And so really, what we're doing is, and this is only if we choose to, to continue with Worksbe over the next nine months. But really, what we're talking about is 56,160. So it's actually less than what we approved. And only is that if we decide to stay with them, you know, the rest of the year. That's all. Happy to answer any questions.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, oh, Councilmembers Kelly, followed by Newsma.
So just to be clear, so this was, I see, in the budget that we passed, the amount that you said, 68,042. And that was in the general fund, not from the surplus from last year. I thought it was taken, I thought it was part of the surplus.
I think it's the same thing. It's just general fund, yeah.
No, well, it's a little bit different because I think like the 4.5 that we took for the pensions, I thought this was also, because then that actually increases our surplus. I just, I just want to understand, was this, was this a line item in the 23 general fund? It was.
It would increase our surplus amount. I think that's true.
So.
By, you know, small amount, depending on how long we, you know, we use Worksbe. But yes, it will reduce the surplus.
So this was to be taken from that 14.1 million last, the surplus of '22. That's how we designated that funding?
No, it was just in the budget.
Just in the budget. Okay, that's what I mean. It was in part of the 2023 budget. Okay. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Councilmember Newsma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do agree with Councilmember Burns and my colleagues that we definitely could use some more help. So starting with that point of agreement, I'm not convinced this is the most prudent use of taxpayer dollars. What we're contemplating here is paying a remote worker $78 an hour to do a job that would cost a temporary contract employee, or a contract employee, let me say that more accurately, $20 or $30 an hour. The city managers or staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's about what we're talking about. So we're contemplating hiring somebody who works, who knows where, more than twice what we would pay somebody to do that work who would live and work in Evanston. And, you know, when we initially approached this conversation, it was in the context of getting something done sooner rather than later and then maybe eventually considering bringing someone in-house. I'm prepared to cut to the chase and advocate for bringing somebody in-house, whether that's on a part-time basis for $20 or $30 an hour or bringing in somebody on a permanent basis to do 40 hours a week. I think we could justify that. So I'm not going to support the Worksbe contract because I would prefer to have this work done in-house. I think it could be done cheaper and be done better.
Councilmember Reed, followed by Revelle.
Thank you. I'm going to be supporting this. I agree with Councilmember Newsma. I do think that, you know, in the long term, it may be better to have this work done in-house. And so I kind of hope that our city manager or staff, if we need to do something more official to get the ball rolling so by next year, we can have somebody on staff that's in the building. They wouldn't necessarily live in Evanston, as we know that a lot of our employees don't. But they'd be here, and that's important. I also don't know if we'd only be paying them $20, $30 an hour. Folks need health care and time off and all kinds of other stuff. So I do think that number is a bit incorrect. But nonetheless, I do agree with the overall sentiment, which is it makes sense to bring this in-house. I will note that it's not just, from my understanding of the Worksbe contract, it's not just one person. It's potentially a team of three people or several, two people that will be assigned to us. So, as I think that's important to note. So I will be voting for this. I think it's, as has been stated, the assistance is desperately needed by this body. And I think this is a good short-term, short-term solution in search of the long-term solution, which is actually adding more staff in-house. Thank you.
Councilmember Revelle, followed by Wen.
So I have a question, I guess, for city manager. How, if we went the direction that Councilmember Newsma is suggesting of hiring, I guess, a contract worker to do this work, how long would it take us to actually get someone in place to do this work? Because, I mean, the council members who are eager to have this assistance have been waiting quite a while already.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, council members, Clerk Mendoza, Lucrento City Manager. So I would share, like, even right now on our current job board, we have a couple of positions, advertising part-time contractor positions. So, long story short, we would be able to, if that was the decision of the direction of the council to go, we could post relatively quickly, advertise a position, conduct interviews, and hire that person. It would be several weeks, but not several months.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Councilmember Newsma that I think it makes financial sense to go that route quickly. But I'm also sympathetic to my colleagues who are eager to have this, you know, staff support. So I'm torn.
Councilmember Wen, followed by Haraqaris.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Newsma on this. But I do, I am very sympathetic to the members of the council who want to have the assistance. I think that it is needed. Having been on the council when we have had a position like this in the city manager's office, it was very valuable. So I would, and it was someone who was here, who was working for all of us, who understood what was happening at the city, was able to, they were in the building. They were able to contact anybody within the building who they felt could help them solve a problem. So I, again, as I'm appreciative of the desire to bring someone on to help with this, I do think we get higher value added by hiring someone to do this who would be here in the community. Thank you.
Councilmember Haraqaris, followed by Harris.
I didn't see it in the packet, but do we have like an evaluation period where we would come back to see how this potential contract would go? I know we have the 45-day to terminate the contract. As much, I do appreciate the sentiment of having like an Evanstonian working for us and doing this. But I also think, you know, with the health care costs and everything, it'd probably be more expensive than the 68, yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Clerk Mendoza, and City Manager Stowe. I'm Allison Leifiger, the policy coordinator. The $20 to $30 an hour would be for somebody who is working hourly, part-time, who's not getting benefits. So, in that sense, it would be a lot, a lot less expensive to go with someone in-house. But if we hired somebody full-time, obviously, then with benefits, it would, it would be more than Worksby. But that's, that's the number that Councilmember Nusma is referencing. And that's why he's saying it would be so much less expensive because it'd be $20 to $30 an hour instead of 70-plus an hour. And we do have, we do have people on staff who are part-time, hourly, don't get benefits. It's maybe not the direction you want to go, right? But in terms of cost, that's an option.
Thanks.
Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. So, I think we've said it all. We voted on Worksby. We got approval. Our constituents even said we needed the help. I think we begin with this, but do look at trying to hire someone, whether that's part-time or full-time. We just, we've just been told we have excess in funding, so we can potentially fund this out of some of that money, which brings us back to, if we look at that in totality, we can look at how we spend the excess money, not just piecemeal it. So, I will be voting in favor of this for a limited time, hoping that we will find someone to do this work and work for the city, which would have a better feel for who we are, what is needed. But we need to begin. We've been doing this almost half a year.
At this time, no one is asking to speak for the first time, so we go back for second cracks, beginning with Councilmember Burns with three minutes left.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I don't even know if there's agreement up here on what kind of a internal hire would look like. I, I think the equivalent of this, and I'm not going to go into the detail of why they're, what they're providing is different from a part-time person that hopefully we find in a, in a really competitive job market. But I just want to say that I, I think the equivalent is a full-time salaried person with insurance. This is going to be a grinding job where you're doing, you're responding to emails, you're helping, like, draft newsletters. I mean, this is, this is not, I don't, I'm not exactly sure what council has had previously. I think most councils have support staff that, like, help plan meetings. And this is, like, all of the work that most people didn't say they wanted to do when they grew up, right? And so, the idea that we're going to, you know, find some part-time person that can fit this into their life, I'd rather go with, at least to start, with a company that does this professionally, that's going to provide 80 active working hours to council, to the full council, whoever chooses to participate. And, and, and we can continue to try to figure out where there's agreement on a permanent internal hire. Again, my, my position on that is, I think the equivalent to this is a full-time salaried insurance person that's going to be willing to do that really grinding work, but knows they have the job security and, and, and a salary, appropriate salary to, to weather it, you know? Honestly, I would, this is not a job that I would want. And I don't think a lot of people would want in such a competitive market. But again, with the right salary, with the right insurance, I think we could find somebody. It takes some time. So, let's start here, learn from this, and then we can look to do that.
Still on second cracks, Councilmember Reed with three and a half minutes left.
Yeah, I won't repeat that. That was going to be my point. But I, I'm looking for someone who is the quality of Allison. And I don't think Allison with a family would do this job for $30 an hour part-time. And so, I, that's, I'll just, I'll leave that point there. Councilmember Burns made that really well. And then lastly, for my colleagues, I'm kind of reading the room here. I don't quite know exactly how Councilmember Revel's going to vote yet, so it's really hinging on Councilmember Revel. But this could be a 4-4 vote, and then Mayor Biss has to vote and be the tiebreaker here, since we're missing one of our colleagues. And so, with that, although I enjoy hearing Mayor Biss vote occasionally, I would encourage my colleagues who are maybe on the fence or are not so sure about this. I am one of you, to some degree. I'm not super, I do think that having someone on staff would be better, but I do also need the assistance now. And I think many of us need the assistance now. And if, at the beginning of this process, you know, before we pass the budget, if we said, yeah, we're going to, you know, hire someone or get them on staff by now, then I guess we'd be here now with somebody on staff. But we didn't make that decision. And so, I would encourage folks who are on the fence to vote yes. You will have a full supporter out of me when it comes to next budget cycle and hopefully before then, working to get somebody on staff in the building if we can find $100,000 plus to pay them. Thank you.
Still on second cracks, Councilmember Kelly with four minutes and 10 seconds left.
This is my first time speaking to this, Daniel, by the way.
It is not.
To this?
No.
To this one? I asked a question, okay. So, is there anything that precludes us from just allocating, so if it's, you know, 60 whatever, $7,000 each, and we present bills that we've paid? I mean, as opposed to, so, because I can see, you know, I've hired research assistants in the past, and it just seems like, you know, you're going to find somebody who works well with you, who understands your interest and style, et cetera. I mean, is there anything that would be, is there any reason we couldn't do something like that, where each council member would be allotted a certain amount annually?
Chair, if I may, that's where I started off, and I think got beat up pretty bad in the, from the public about suggesting that idea. I thought it was a fine idea. Got, we got, received some pushback, and so pivoted and to look at this model. But so, yeah, we, that was previously discussed.
So, I, to me, that seems far preferable, but...
Seeing no further discussion, will the clerk please take the roll on A14?
Councilmember Wen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
No.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hatakatis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With six voting in favor and two voting against, the motion carries and item A14 is passed. This brings us now to item P3. Would someone care to make a motion on item P3?
I will move item P3, ordinance 3402223, approving a special use and major variations for a religious institution at 1801 through 1805 Church Street. And do folks mind if, mind if we move both? Okay. And then I'll also move item P4, ordinance 35023, approving
Hold on, timeout. Mr. Cummings, I think, wants to weigh in before you finish the sentence.
I was just going to point out that the Land Use Commission had different, differing opinions on each. And so, we actually make our record clear.
Okay.
I would ask the council to consider each individually.
Okay. So, then I will end my motion at just P3.
Is there a second? Councilmember...
Well, I guess I'm being asked to do P4 first, so...
He was just trying to save time, and the corporation council was uncomfortable with that approach. So, we're not going to have this time-saving approach either way. So, whichever comes first, the other one's going to have to come after. So, Councilmember Reed moves passage of ordinance 34-023. Councilmember Wen seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing Councilmember Kelly.
So, so are we, in item P3, the special use and variations for this, the institution?
The church.
The church. So, we're asked to authorize this on land that this entity currently doesn't own, correct? So, we're asked to approve these variances, yet the entity does not have the land.
You might want to restate the question.
Okay. So, the, the plot here, the property that we're looking at, that we're asked to approve the special use for, for the church, the church currently does not own that land, yet we're asked to approve this development. Yes?
Mr. Cummings?
Yes. So, routinely, the council will, will be presented, or the Land Use Commission, and then the council will be presented with requests for zoning relief before an acquisition happens because the acquisition may not go through if the prospective zoning relief is not provided.
Thank you. And so, we still currently don't really have any idea how this will be funded. Is that also correct? But I just want to point out that generally speaking, property owners usually own the land that we are discussing developments. Or frequently. It seems, from my experience here, this is the first time I've seen this, where we're approving a development where the land is not owned. But, so, am I clear that we don't know the funding for this project, how this will be funded, and we're asked to approve it?
Sarah Flax, Community Development Director for the City of Evanston. We do not ask any religious organization or, in fact, get proof of the budget and the ability to build buildings that we are not involved in funding. That isn't a process of the land use regulation. That's a private matter, and they are coming up with their own financing.
Thank you. Although I believe that was one of the issues that the Land Use Commission had, was understanding the funding for this project.
Well, the Land Use Commission occasionally goes off onto things that, over which they have no jurisdiction.
Okay. And I guess I also have a question. I believe that the, the results from the IEPA said that this land, they gave a green light, but only for industrial use, whereas it was presented to the Land Use Commission as, as, you know, green-lighted for residential or for any other use. But it wasn't explained to the Land Use Commission that, in fact, this was really approved for industrial use only, and that they'd have to come back and get yet another letter of approval separate from the IEPA. That, I think, is problematic. And I'm concerned that we haven't brought this back to the Land Use Commission with full disclosure as to what the IEPA actually said about this land.
The IEPA gave a letter of no further remediation as long as the barrier is maintained. There are any number of cases where you remove a barrier or you replace it with a different barrier when you're redeveloping property. Frequently, when you're cleaning up, this was a gas station, and there were underground tanks. I believe they were leaking underground tanks. The tanks were removed, but not knowing exactly what's going to be built, you rarely fully remediate a property in this situation for all uses because, depending on what you do, you may not need to do that. When you're putting a foundation over that, you, in essence, cap the property again, and that contains any remaining contaminants. The areas where you are drilling to take soil out for the caissons or for the foundation will have to be removed and disposed of at an appropriate site, depending on the contaminants.
Thank you. I mean, I have the letter, and it says exclusively for industrial use. If it's not industrial, another letter has to be extracted from the IEPA. They make that very clear.
Right. And they will have to say what they're going to do and follow up with it.
They're going to get another letter, so it hasn't been green-lighted for the purpose that's intended there.
Well, they rarely would proceed to do that and clean it up if they weren't approved to do the project.
Right, but that wasn't presented accurately to the Land Use Commission by Mr. Koenig. So, this is our public land, this lot. So, we are going to gift it? We haven't done that yet. So, the idea is that, to whom are we gifting our public lot to here? Can someone tell me?
Point of order, I believe that's with the other item.
No, well, it's all very convoluted. So, this particular plot, I believe that's, isn't that all the public land? Where the, on the corner, that's where our public lot is. And we're gifting that to somebody, but I don't know who. And that's why it was taken off P and D, because I really needed an answer to know who we were going to be gifting that to in order to understand this land swap.
The land swap comes after approval. But the land, the, the, when, if the projects are approved, then we will come back with the land swap information. And in essence, what happens is the equivalent city land, which is the corner lot and the two lots that go on Darrow that go north to the alley, that square footage will be moved to the west, and the church's square footage will be moved to the east. This accomplishes putting the housing in the middle of the block and the height in the middle of the block, and allowing an iconic building on the corner as required by the West Evanston Master Plan. We aren't going to proceed with that process if, or until the projects are approved.
Thank you. So, so it's possible. I mean, we don't know how it's going to be funded. Is there, I don't know if, you know, Mr. Cummings or Ms. Flax, if you could identify, I assume there's a contingency in here. I went through it. I didn't see it on initial read. That this is all contingent upon a land swap? Is that in there? I didn't see it, but I could have missed it. There's a lot to read. Is that, can you read the part of the, this ordinance that has the contingency in it?
The land swap is a, is conditioned on approval of the, of the two projects.
But this project can't go forward. It's conditional upon the land swap. What we are approving tonight is conditional. And I just didn't see that condition in this ordinance. It is, okay, no, that's what I, I'm sure it is. I just was asking if you could, I just, I read through it before coming to see, and I didn't see it, that condition. So, I mean, we could end up, I'm sure we will, and I'm sure you all will approve this. I certainly can't get behind this. This is way too vague, and I feel the residents of the 5th Ward have not been, I don't think this has been given the due attention that it should be given, both environmentally, both with regards to the community space. But we could end up with an empty lot. We give away our lot. We could end up with nothing being built there because perhaps the money isn't available. And I think that we need to look at this far more carefully than we're looking at it currently. So, I still don't know to whom we're gifting the lot.
Mr. Mayor, if I may answer...
Mr. Cummings?
If I just may answer the previous question, what the council is approving tonight is the special use. The land swap, none of it happens without the council approval of the special use. Land Use Commission provided a negative recommendation on this item, that all of those findings are laid out in the ordinance as to why they had a negative recommendation. And I think it's very clear in the ordinance that but for the approval of the special use, then the land swap does not happen.
Right. It's just not expelled out there. So, I understand that going after the fact, we're going to do this land swap approval, and we're going to do a funding approval. But this special use is contingent upon that. So, yeah, I have very serious concerns about what's going to happen to this very, very special block of the 5th Ward. And I, you know, I'm very concerned that we're doing this, I feel, in a way that's backwards. So, I cannot support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Councilmember Burns.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, and I'm going to speak more to this on the next item, but it's difficult to have these discussions because there's a lot of different things that are thrown out, and it's, it's hard to keep track of it. And people hear one thing, they think it's true. A lot of times, it's not. It's, I'm trying to find a better way to do this moving forward. But all of what the master plan calls for, which is what Director Flax just communicated, is being addressed through this proposal. The plan calls for an iconic building, I've heard, on the corner where we currently own land. And I've heard community members repeatedly say, it calls for an iconic building. Well, there's an iconic building going there. That's the church. It meets the standard. It called for retail, ground-floor retail. That's what we're putting in. I've heard that repeatedly come up, time and time again. We want retail. You're getting retail. I want it too. That was one of the conditions I had to even feel comfortable... conditions I had to even feel comfortable forwarding this to the community to weigh in on is that we make every attempt for a local priority. I say every attempt because ultimately it's HUD's decision to approve, and that we get back ground floor retail. Why did I say that? Because we've lost a lot in the 5th Ward due to storefront churches and non-for-profits. So it's almost like I'm hearing the same things constantly repeated back to me that are my position on these issues, and I've advocated for them, and they are in place. I also just want to emphasize that the church currently owns land. So no matter what, they end up with land in this area. They own land. It's not, we're not giving them anything. If anything was really happening is, we're kind of gifting this H O D C in a sense, because they're the ones who don't have land currently, right? The land that the church currently owns is equal to the land that the city owns. So all they're getting, all they've agreed to do is, hey, we'll swap land so that we can build our iconic church on the corner. And so it's really H O D C and the affordable housing that benefits from the swap and benefits from the land donation. And so we're getting 33 units of affordable housing if we approve it from agreeing to do this land swap. And then if the church is successful, we also get an iconic building and not a storefront church, but an iconic building on the corner that meets the standard of the West Evanston Plan. So I too also care about the planning processes that preceded me. We're sticking to it, and especially with the iconic building. And I think the spirit of it in terms of height, the current zoning call for 47 feet, I made an amendment, and now it said 47 feet. So happy to clarify anything else, but just wanted to point that out here. Thank you.
Thank you. No one is requesting to speak for a first time. The only person requesting to speak is Councilmember Kelly, whose time has expired. I'll give you just a few seconds to make a brief last point before we move forward.
I just want to clarify. So Bobby, you said the lot is going to be gifted to H O D C uniquely?
I don't know why I did that wrong, but the order of things, just who's going to get it first, and then how's the swap? I think that's the question that Councilmember Kelly wants to understand. But what I'm saying is ultimately the church will end up with the lot on the corner, and H O D C will have the lots that the church currently owns. And what we're getting out of it, gifting towards this project, is 33 new affordable housing.
No, I understand all that. I think we, it's public property, it's public money. We have a right to know who we're giving away our public land to explicitly.
All right, Ms. Flax, why don't you, Director Flax, why don't you give one answer, and then we will move on.
The agreement that the prior council made was that the land would be donated to this partnership, and then the division of land would follow after that to separate the ownership, as we've discussed.
Is that an LLC, or what is the partnership?
The partnership is, has not been actually created yet. That's in the process. But it will be between H O D C and Mount Pisgah. And there is a legal agreement being drawn up.
Thank you very much. Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please take the role on P 3, Ordinance 34-0-23? This is for action.
Just point of clarification. Because this is the Land Use Commission recommended denial, then so to vote in favor of the project is to vote.
No, I believe the motion that was made was to approve the special use, notwithstanding the Land Use Commission's recommendation. So yes vote is yes on the project, and no vote is no on the project.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for the question. Just a brief pause for the Corporation Council to tell me I'm an idiot, if that's the case.
I would not do that, Mayor Biss, but no, you are correct.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Revell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
And Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and one voting against, the motion carries, and Ordinance 34-0-23 is passed. This brings us to item P 4. Would someone care to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Burns moves approval of Ordinance 35-0-23. Councilmember Reed seconds. Councilmember Burns.
So I just wanted to, and this is kind of to the community, that, you know, this is a project, both of these proposals, are projects that started before my time in office. And so there were meetings and discussions with the community that happened even before I was in office. And when I got in office, I picked up on that, held three town halls, two of which were at the church, Mount Pisgah, and one of which was a 5th Ward meeting, a dedicated entire Ward meeting, just to speak, talking about this issue. H O D C flyered the area on one occasion to notice for the meeting. There was a sign obviously put up per the, I think, land use noticing requirements. And I've had many, 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 kind of small group and individual meetings about this issue, and maybe for the first time, I don't know, some of the council members who have been on for a while can let me know, but also posted poster boards in our rec centers in the 5th Ward with a picture of the project, all the information, how many three bedrooms, what the cost would be, with comic cards so that anybody could reach out at any point. And I wanted to make sure that this was, that we were putting it in the way of people that would most likely benefit from this type of project. And I'm thankful that we got some really good responses from that. So we have done community engagement around this. I've also heard people say, well, I didn't, you know, find out about it to the Land Use Commission process. We held three other meetings. There were people who live on the block that were there. I don't know why they were, seemed to be more motivated to organize people once there was an opposition to it, because they were there. They could have easily encouraged their neighbors to go. I don't think maybe they did that. I don't know why. But we did do our part in hold community meetings. But formally, the Land Use Commission is the part of the process where the, where formally the community is engaged. It used to be DAPR. That was a, you know, kind of an external, public-facing meeting. And I think earlier on, we took that to an internal meeting. But that is formally the first time, in the sense, the community is welcomed into this project. So even that you were able to participate there is a good thing. And in fact, Radita, you'll remember on our first call when we talked, I invited you to the Land Use Commission meeting. Because even though we disagree, I believe in the public process. I wanted you to participate. I told you about the meeting, when it was, date time, and wanted you to participate, because I believe in it. What we're having issues with is disagreement. Not that I'm not listening, but we disagree. And that's okay. It should be okay. Every time somebody, residents come up here and speak, and hopefully I'll be allowed to go a little bit over time, colleagues, I take notes. So I, it is very important that I track all the issues that people have, may not agree, but where there is agreement, I look into them. And so just to go over a few, people talked about height. Also had a concern about height for separate reasons, not because of the height itself, but just because ahead of the, our comp plan, I didn't think it was a great time to be going five stories when the spirit of the zoning calls for 47 feet. I made the amendment, based on how I feel, but also what I heard from the community. On-site property manager was not initially planned for this project. What was initially planned, and this was presented as fact, that the maintenance person has not yet been approved. That was, that's actually not a fact. The fact is that it has been approved. The unit has been approved by Ida to be taken offline so that a maintenance person who lives in the facility can serve that building. That has already happened. Where you probably got mixed up is, that hasn't been approved for 319 Dempster, but that has been approved for Church and Darrell. The property manager was a new development, again, based on what I was hearing from the community, concerns about crime and some of the other issues that we routinely hear about when it comes to affordable housing. Even though I don't even necessarily agree there's a correlation, I still responded to it by working with Richard to make sure that in addition to the maintenance person that will live on site, that there is a property manager that is headquartered in office out of this center, right? That was not originally in the plan. The retail, the last meeting was at 1,200 square feet. Very uncomfortable. Why? Well, let's reference what I said before. It was really important to me to support this project that we added retail, because we've lost it, not just in generally in the 5th Ward, but specifically along the Church Street corridor. So what did we do? We went back to the drawing board. We've gone from 1,200 to now about 2,200-plus square feet of ground floor retail. And I've consulted with people in economic development. They say that is more than enough. It's not a huge space, but it's more than enough for a nice, you know, coffee shop, you know, think tables with two chairs on each side, a few of those, and a nice kind of coffee shop, you know, breakfast sandwiches, coffee, donuts, et cetera, which is what I've heard a lot of people call for. So.
To Councilmember, I know you wanted some extra, John, just heads up, you're at five.
I appreciate it. Please, I'm going to wrap it up. And this is important. I don't think we'll probably have too much discussion outside of myself and Councilmember Kelly, possibly. So there's, yeah, so I'm trying to answer all the questions so I can allow her to do her thing. The last thing I want to say is that I never said that 319 Dempster didn't have challenges. In fact, Richard Koenig, who is here today, the executive director of H O D C, has always said that this is his most challenging property. So not only have I, did I never, I never communicated that, he hasn't. From the very first time that I've talked to Richard about 319 Dempster Street, he has admitted, taking full accountability, that it is my most challenging property. So what happened? Well, there's been a full building inspection. There's been cooperation from H O D C with our emergency responders that led to the arrest that a gentleman during public comment made, talked about earlier, right? There's, there's been an agreement, right, which we're going to solidify that today, to enter into conversations with metropolitan tenants' organization, who we contract with to help with landlord and tenant disputes, and the tenants, and the city, and I invited some other community members who live around the area who have concerns to participate in a improvement plan that H O D C will have to do. Last thing I'll say is, is that, again, I've nev, I never said there was an issue with 319. And ever since this, I learned about this, both from Councilmember Kelly, but also Richard Koenig, because he called me about some issues he was dealing with and asked for my help, I've worked, I've tried to do my best to work with Richard and Councilmember Kelly to come up with a solution. What, this is the last thing I'll say. Chronic issues typically involve more than one facility. So if there was a pattern that this was an issue across the entire H O D C portfolio, that is another issue. I have not seen that, and I've said that repeatedly. What I've seen is, we have one building where there's really big issues, historically as well, because I've heard from my colleague, Councilmember Nguyen, et cetera, and we need to deal with it. And I've felt that way the entire time. But I have not seen any evidence of a chronic issue, a chronic breakdown in management of H O D C. And I've still haven't received any, anything during public comment as well. We have a building and there's a problem. We need to address it. I'll hold there. Thank you for allowing me to go over time.
Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you. First, I'd like to say I think this topic is very apropos of the Fair Housing Month, given particularly that the residents of 319 The Clarage have been treated so incredibly unfairly for so many years, that I'm, you know, I'm glad we can focus on that this evening, because it's been tremendous. Since I got elected, I have heard complaints from a handful of residents over and over again. I have been met with unresponsiveness, with almost dismissiveness, from Mr. Koenig. I immediately, in '21, we set up a meeting with Councilmember Nguyen and I, we met on the phone, we had a conference call. Nothing changed. I set up a subsequent meeting later with Mr. Koenig and Ms. Flax. Nothing changed again. Evictions were ongoing. People were getting beat up, taken out, aggravated battery, broken bones, lacerated faces, drug dealing, on and on. It's gone on, and nothing was changing, even though there were promises made. So until I see something in place in that building, I cannot support this project. I stand, I have the back of my residence before I have Mr. Koenig's back, or yours, with all due respect, Councilmember Burns. I want to see safe living space over there, and it's not enough that he acknowledges that's a problem place for me. What does that mean to me if you don't resolve it? And there has been no effort. There has been nothing. We, in fact, this taxpayers paid to have a bathroom installed in there many years ago, long before I was elected, so that there would be onsite management. But there still is not. And yes, finally now, thank you, City Manager Stowe, I asked him, I said, can we, like, just pay for this to get some management in there? And that's what it's going to take. But I still, and I even told City Manager Stowe this evening, don't leave it to Mr. Koenig. We're going to have to make sure we get that in there, because I have seen no response. He should be just, I mean, I spent about two hours there on Friday, and I left in tears hearing the stories from the residents. And everyone, Connections for the Homeless and H O D C should know better than anybody else, for those residents to come out and speak about the horrors of the living conditions there takes a lot of courage, and that's very rare. So I applaud those residents. I have a few, a handful of others who've issued statements from there. One who has a very dear friend, he actually lives in the Pearlman. One of his best friends, an elderly woman, lives there, and he said he's afraid to even stand outside of the building. He worries very much about the safety of his friend who lives there, not just her, but he, in fact, he said he worries about the whole building. Another resident said, wanted me to make sure it was known, Kevin Melvin McCullough there, who is a security officer, who offered many months ago to do security there, but said nobody responded to his offer. He said he thinks it's incredibly important to have eyes on there and a sense of security around that building. He says at night, the place is like an open house. People come in and block the doors and leave them open, giving everybody access, the public access, all night. And I'm not reading all these comments in their entirety. Another resident said that, that, you know, some, there's nobody in there to stop the loud noises, the slamming doors, the crazy music, that it's just unbearable to live there. And I could go on. And, you know, we met, I insisted on a meeting when I first met with Mr. Koenig, and I, you know, tried to ascertain what's causing the problem. At one point, he said that, you know, we were trying to figure out, like, how they vet the residents, and, you know, he, Mr. Koenig said in large part, there's a large number of Connections for the Homeless clients, and he said that was in large part a problem, that they did not do a good job of tending to their clients. And at that point, I said, okay, then we need to sit down with Connections for the Homeless as well. We need to resolve this, because I can't have my residents living in fear. And that's how they live there. I mean, I left in tears hearing about the stories, but, and many people just think that's their lot in life, and they're just supposed to live that way. And Daniel Biss and Luke Stowe heard, you know, for over an hour, an accounting of what it's like living in that building. And I hope you were moved enough to now understand why something needs to be done. I hope you were. I hope you have that humanity, and I believe you do. But something absolutely needs to be done, and at least to respect for all of our, you know, rhetoric about caring for our low-income and our vulnerable people, at least, let's please hold off on this until we see actually a plan in place, activated, evidence that there has been improvement in that building. Otherwise, this is to just disregard what our residents have been going through over there. We should absolutely wait until that's in place. And I, it's just absolutely, and then, you know, I also concur with many of the residents' concerns, also that things have been happening on the fly. I would never accept this in my ward, to have buildings lowered, you know, units reduced, commercial space reduced without going back to Land Use Commission. You know, you can say, Ms. Flax, that it's not a P D because it's in an overlay district. That's just semantics. This should go back to Land Use Commission. So I also feel badly for the residents, that I feel like the process hasn't been fair to them either. So, you know, I, there's no way I can support this. I feel terrible for what the residents have gone through for so many years in that building. And, you know, and again, you could see over 100 emails between Mr. Koenig, where I've said, hey, it's going on again, and he'll look in his camera and say, oh, yeah, I see it, I'll send someone over. And I have felt like the building manager, that if I'm not every day emailing or telling him to look in his cameras, or have someone look in his cameras, it's mayhem. But it is anyway, because obviously I can't do that. So, I mean, this has just been a train wreck. It's been horrific for the residents. Something has to be done. And minimally, please, can we hold off on this, out of respect for those residents, out of our concern for these residents, our low-income, vulnerable residents who live in this building? And please hold his feet to the fire, and make sure that we see something in place immediately at 319 Dempster, The Clarage, before we approve any further developments. Oh, and by the way, we're talking about gifting public land, and we're talking about giving away $4 million to Mr., to the H O D C project as well. I mean, this is an awful lot to ask in the face of, oh, he's acknowledged, it's a bad problem. That means nothing, Councilmember Burns, that he's acknowledged it's a problem. Oh, this is our most challenging property. So do something.
And I said more than that. Councilmember Kelly, you're just ignoring it. But I said more than that.
I've been, I've been generous here, but you're way over time, Councilmember.
Okay, I apologize.
So seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please take the role on the motion to pass Ordinance 35-0-23?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Revell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Harris, sorry.
With seven voting in favor and one voting against, the motion carries, and Ordinance 35-0-23 is passed. This brings us to item ED 1. Would someone like to make a motion relative to item? to item ED1?
Some will.
I move disapproval.
The motion is, the motion from Councilmember Burns is, uh, to, to, um, uh, support the purchase of Meridian barricades for special event support. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Councilmember Harris, seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Reed.
Yes. Um, well, actually, first, I don't know if Councilmember Newsma, did you have, you're the person I think who pulled this off?
Yes, I did.
Can I, I'll let you go first and then make my comments.
Sure, with the mayor's permission. I'm not sure where I am in the lineup here.
Councilmember, Councilmember Newsma, followed by Reed, followed by Winn.
Okay. Uh, I, I think we need some barrier, uh, some of these barriers. I think this would be money well spent. I'm just not sure we need as many as we're contemplating here. Uh, we're contemplating 60, which eats up, uh, you know, $600,000 of our dwindling ARPA budget. Um, and so the, the cost is something we have to be very cognizant of. So I would appreciate a snapshot into where we're at with ARPA, what's been allocated, what pending requests might be in the pipeline, so we can make a fully informed decision here.
Sarah Flax, Community Development Director. Um, as of our last discussion, we still have $6,393,323 unallocated officially. Um, at, um, the meeting on the 13th of May, uh, March, excuse me, there were a number, several.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure who's running the screen. Could you zoom in a little bit to make that more?
That's it.
Can you repeat that number again? Six million?
Six million, three hundred, ninety-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-three. Maybe we can enlarge that. I'm not quite sure how.
Sorry.
That's better than was.
It's just a single PDF, so, um, there's not showing any way to enlarge it. Um, we had, um, some of the things that council members had, um, identified, um, a high interest in funding, um, at that last meeting included, um, Evanston Thrives Business District, and that is working, I think, sort of. Yeah, I don't, yeah, right. Um, um, one of the other things discussed is a million and a half for the HOD, HODC development, also a million and a half for the addressing health inequities in lower-income neighborhoods, and, um, $300,000 for safety improvements to crosswalks. Now, that won't, those weren't absolute, they weren't voted on, but those were ones, things that when we looked at the number of people who.
AV page view, AV page view. AV page view.
Anderson's doing it remotely. Um, um, so those items collectively that had been discussed, um, would have used, um, would have not, well, I'll just say, would not have used up the entire, um, amount of ARPA, but would have not left, um, enough to do the, to fund the barricades at the amount we're talking about. However, there is additional ARPA-related money that we haven't discussed in the past, and that is, our ARPA funds sitting in our account are now gaining significant interest because interest rates are up. So we have at least $500,000 in ARPA interest, which significantly changes the picture. Um, and I think, well, certainly gives me the confidence to say that the priorities that had been discussed in the past could still be funded, and, um, a significant amount could be made for, uh, commitment could be made to the barricades without, um, endangering those commitments, or those projects in which the council had expressed interest.
So the middle column, estimated budget, the total of those items is $8,163,000.
Yes.
We have remaining in the bank, uh, $6,893,000, including interest.
Right.
Right? The, the ARPA principal plus the interest.
Correct.
Which leaves us a deficit of 1.269 million.
If we were to fund all those things.
You wanted to do all of these.
But the priorities of the council, at least what seemed to be the priorities, was significantly less than that. It was the $3 million for, um, Evanston Thrives, a million five each for housing and for the, um, health inequ, to address health inequities and $300,000 for the crosswalks.
So maybe we can stretch, you know, we can absorb the $19,000 somewhere, but if we devoted the entire requested amount, $613,000, to the Meridian barriers, we would not be able to do items F through M.
Correct.
Okay, so that's the, you know, that's the information I was looking for here. So thank you for, for providing this. So like, living room, um, mental health, and some TBD numbers, small business assistance, and workforce development.
We have figured out a way to proceed with the living room construction already.
Okay.
That was sort of a backup.
Yeah.
Um, there was, yes, it's very important that we get that done, but hopefully we could find other sources, and we are doing that.
And just as a point of clarification, the 3.5 million for participatory budgeting that has already been.
That's totally separate.
Allocated, even though we haven't.
That's counted as allocated, even though it isn't allocated to specific projects.
Okay, okay. Um, all right, that's informative, you know, I, I'm not sure what the right number is. I don't think 60 is, it's where we need to be on this. So I'm hoping the other, somebody else has an informed number that, uh, they can justify with some, uh, something other than just a, a finger in the, in the wind and a, and a, and a wild guess. I'm happy to make that wild guess, um, if nobody else has a better idea.
The next speakers are councilmembers Reed and Winn. I would maybe respectfully suggest that if we come to a point of making a wild guess, maybe we should hold off for two weeks and figure out a way to make a non-wild guess. Um, but.
But staff has provided enough information, or, you know, I don't know if there's any more information to be provided. It's, at this point, council needs to make a call.
Councilmember Reed, followed by Winn.
Thank you. Um, I put my finger in the air, and I'm not feeling anything yet, so I don't have a wild number. I would support holding this. I, I, you know, I've heard this presentation from, uh, from Audrey, or from Director Thompson and Sergeant Sophia a few times, both in economic development. I believe they came to, I guess it was just council, uh, the next time. So a few times have heard this. I, I am, um, I'm, I'm, I'm not supportive of this. I'd be supportive at a much lower number. I honestly, I wonder if this is something good to kick over to our participatory budgeting, if the community sees this as a priority. I, I personally don't see this as a priority. I think we can spend $600,000 on workforce development, on health issues, on, uh, providing housing stability, a whole host of things that make our community much safer, uh, and much more accessible in reality than, um, than this. And I know that there are discussions, it's, it's been raised, and I hear it, that, you know, potentially deploying these barriers, uh, you know, could be easier than deploying big dump trucks and, and other things. I, I think, like, we're, we're, it's the, the gift and the curse of, curse of the modern world. There's a lot of information. I think we live in a, I think we know too much, and we're aware of things that are happening miles and miles away that get in, inside of us and, and make us feel like the world is a much scarier place than it really is. Um, and I, I just, I see so many real issues that are happening here on the ground, um, that, that to me, this isn't a good use of, of funds. So I, I would be supportive of, in fact, so I'll, I'll just make the motion, cause I think that Mayor Biss is correct in that, you know, we should come back with another number. Although I do recall that one of these committees, uh, or one of the committees this was discussed at, I believe Councilmember Newsma, or Winn, or someone made a motion to reduce this amount then, or certainly indicated that it would be reduced. And so I, I don't see that reflected here, and so I will move.
Give us a chance.
Give us a chance. So I, with giving that chance, I would move to, you know,
No.
to, to hold this until our next meeting. I will, I will withdraw that, but we'll have the discussion. I, I, I'm gonna vote no.
Councilmember Winn?
Well, I do see the value of these, uh, and I think that it, they're actually, uh, a really good solution for a, for a very complex problem. Um, we've been putting up barriers around special events and, uh, uh, for years, partly just to stop just the random driver who isn't paying attention. Uh, and, you know, what we do need is to have something that's movable, that's quickly, uh, quickly deployable, and, um, that isn't one of our big snowplows or dump trucks. So, uh, I'll, I'll put my finger in the wind and say, I think we should have 30 of them. Uh, and that's not 60, that's 30. And that allows us to do Fountain Square events and, uh, some of the other events, but it's, it's not, you know, it's not the 60 that would, uh, cover our largest events, but I do think it's important to have some of these to, uh, to act as good barriers around the, the events that actually the Evanston Thrives report is telling us we should have more of. So, um, I, I would, I suggest that we purchase 30 of them. Then that does leave more money for workforce development and all of the other things as well.
Councilmembers out of motion. You're prepared to make this time, or is it an informal suggestion for discussion purposes?
Make the motion.
Yes, it is, I would move that we, uh, purchase 30 of these Meridian barriers, and I will put something in.
In that case, could you put that in writing? Uh, Councilmember, uh, Councilmember Winn moves to, uh, uh, purchase 30 of these barriers, uh, and to change the, uh, cost accordingly. Uh, we'll have more details about this momentarily. Uh, Councilmember Ravel, seconds, and we'll all, we'll all await, um.
Point of information, point of information is we're waiting. Sergeant Sophia, um, I recall at one of the committee meetings, did, is my memory correct that you said that a minimum of 20, or 20 some odd, would, would, would get us through, uh, events like at Fountain Square? Is that, is my recollection correct?
Page 315 of the packet.
Okay.
It's all there.
Can I have you state it for me?
Sure. Good evening, Sergeant Scott Sophia, Evanston Police Department. Good evening, Mayor Biss, City Manager Stowe, members of council. Uh, at the prior meeting, we did state that, uh, when the Meridian company had come out to the holiday tree lighting event and a couple other events at Fountain Square, to secure Fountain Square required 18 barriers.
Yeah.
Uh, there are other events that are listed within the packet, as we gave examples of small, medium, and large-scale events throughout the city, not just at Fountain Square, that would, uh, potentially require any number of barriers, starting as low as eight or nine, up to several dozen for some of the events that would really just be once-a-year type events, or even such that may not even occur that often. But for the, uh, Fountain Square events, would be approximately 18. For the events that encompass a larger part of downtown Evanston, then that number, of course, would increase.
Councilmember Winn, as you were preparing your motion, would you be willing to come down a little further on that number, to 20, 20, or 25, or?
I, I'd like to test the waters with, with the 30 and see what happens.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, my email's not working. Um, uh, perfect, okay. So the motion has been sent to me, and, uh, I'll now forward it to all of city council. Um, Councilmember Ravel, followed by Harris. Uh, Ms. Director Thompson, did you wanna?
Yes, so I just want to make sure we're clear that the 30 means the 30 barriers plus the equipment and the carriers that go along with that. I just want to make sure. So everything that would, um, would encompass the 30. So I just want to make sure.
Yes, I, I, that would be part of the, the purchase, would be that the trailer and the necessary equipment to move them.
Point of information, how many of these devices fit on one trailer? I know it's probably in the packet somewhere, but.
The trailer kits are sold to where there would be eight, uh, and you're able to transport eight barriers on one trailer. So just to give a quick example, if, if we were to purchase 16 of the barriers, there'd be two trailers. There's, of course, an option to purchase additional barriers, yet still only keep a certain number of trailers. So for example, you could purchase, uh, two trailers, uh, that are capable of carrying eight each, but purchase the larger number of barriers. What that would mean logistically is that, uh, staff would then have to go back to the storage location after dropping off the first set to pick up more. It would simply add some time, but you're not making the purchase of the additional trailers, yet you're still getting the barriers necessary for the events.
I'd like to make one last pitch. Maybe we reduce the number to 24, so we have an even that fits perfectly on the trailers. We don't have to have people go back and forth, and we can save a couple, quite a bit of money.
So we'll go Councilmember Ravel, and then Harris.
Oh, well, just really briefly, um, one point that hasn't been raised that I gathered from the memo was that there'd be quite a bit of, um, savings in, you know, in staff time. So, you know, we could, we could, if we had all the time in the world tonight, we could say, okay, we'd be saving this much money from salaries, but, um, I'm not gonna ask us to do that. But I, I, I mean, I think this is, um, these barriers sound like a really good investment to me.
Councilmember Harris?
I was just gonna ask, does it change the cost? When, I know when you lower numbers, then costs go up. So is that a huge difference that we're lowering it?
To my understanding, with the government's set fixed pricing, uh, the per-barrier pricing or the pricing for the other equipment, I don't want to speak out of turn, of course, but I don't believe that it does. I believe those prices for the government purchases are set, and it would simply lower by that per, per-barrier number.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, no one's asked to speak for a first time, so we go to Councilmember Reed with two minutes, 20 seconds left.
Yeah, I, I'm not gonna ask for 24 or anything else again, but I, I do just want to note that, you know, just particularly that last question there, we're, we're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars, and we're not 100% sure on, you know, what the per-unit price may be. And so with, with that in mind, I think it would be consistent of past practice of this council, if only just to hold it until the next meeting, to have concrete information, um, about what the new cost will be. And I am actually truly interested in, not that I think it's gonna persuade anybody necessarily, but I do think it's a good metric. You know, what is the, the estimated staff time that we're saving in? Can we actually see if, you know, that holds true when we implement these new barriers? Thank you.
So looking at all of our special events, um, we are, we are happy to go with the 24 and actually two trailers. So we would be fine with two trailers, because that would also mean that if we were taking three trailers, that would still be three staff, if we were doing it at one time. So it would be better, um, or suitable for us to do the 24 barriers with two trailers instead of three. And we would be happy to move with that in order to show what difference this makes, um, before purchasing additional barriers. And this would give us an opportunity to do that. And this would give us an opportunity to do that.
I could vote yes for that.
Okay.
Councilmember Reed, the unit price is on page 328 of the packet.
Thank you. Councilmember Nguyen with 2 and 1/2 minutes left.
I would amend my amendment, or amend my motion, and I have to write this out, I have to send this to everyone, that we purchase, and I will write this down, that we purchase 24 barriers and two trailers and a gate beam, and all the other equipment that goes along to make sure, make this useful.
Councilmember Nguyen, let's just say, I don't know, let's make it clean, withdraws her previous amendment and now moves to amend ED1 so that 30 barriers and two, sorry, 24 barriers, thank you, I apologize, 24 barriers, two trailers, and the gate beam and other necessary accoutrement are purchased. And I believe Councilmember Harris seconded, and I think, it sounds like we're going to have broad agreement on this as soon as it comes in over the transom. While we're waiting, Councilmember Newsma?
Could I just ask Director Thompson to confirm my math here? So 24 trailers at, or barriers at $9,015 each is $216,360. And then two trailers at $71,400 each is $142,180. Add those two numbers together and the total price is then $359,160.
I know I am not Director Thompson, however, if I could step in to help answer this question. We were discussing this earlier. There was a previous quote as part of the packet of multiple quotes with the different numbers of barriers that had come through. One of the quotes was $250,000 and some change for the 16 barriers, the two trailers and the beam gate. To add the additional eight, in speaking to Meridian staff, the cost for the additional just eight barriers plus the shipping would add approximately $52,000 to $53,000 to that quote. So therefore, that $250,000 would become approximately $302,000 to $303,000.
Oh, much better.
The motion, the amendment has been sent to everyone. Seeing for the discussion, will the clerk please take the roll on the amendment with the 24, the two, and the additional necessary stuff?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns? Councilmember, I'm missing like half of the people up here. Councilmember Revell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hara Gares?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With six voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and ED1 is amended. Now, would the clerk please call the roll on ED1 as amended with these new lower numbers?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns? Councilmember Revell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hara Gares?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Harris?
With six voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and item ED1 is passed as amended. This concludes our consent agenda and brings us to call of the wards. Councilmember Nguyen?
No report.
Councilmember Newsma?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a ward meeting coming up on April 19th, 7:00 PM at Robert Crown. It's going to be the Earth Day Ward Meeting. We're going to talk about CARP and environmental sustainability. And office hours are coming up on one of the upcoming Saturdays.
Councilmember Burns? Councilmember Revell?
No report.
Councilmember Reed?
We missed our first eighth ward meeting last month. We will continue on our regular schedule, beginning, or continuing this month, our regular ward meeting will be on the last Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM. Looking forward to seeing residents there. We have Director Thomas, representatives from the police department, Officer Brooks coming out, who's our ward officer, as well as staff from the One Howard Project, which is in response to the RISE grant. So really exciting stuff being discussed there, as well as having representatives from OK Dispensary and West Town Bakery coming in for the newly proposed dispensary bakery that's coming to Howard Street. Looking forward to that discussion.
Councilmember Hara Gares?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Harris?
Council, second ward council meetings will begin, I'll get a new schedule out and let residents know. Thank you.
Seeing nothing further to come before us, the April 10th meeting of the Evanston City Council stands adjourned.